I call this meeting of the Conroe Independent School District Board of Trustees to order. Let the record show that a quorum of members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that the notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. The time is 6:02. We are open today with Trustee Melissa Duncan providing a word of prayer, and Trustee Tiffany Nelson leading us in the pledges.
Please stand with me and join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you for this district. Thank you for the men and women who have decided to dedicate their lives to education. Thank you for the students that fill our hallways and classrooms each day, and for the parents that trust us to honor them. Lord, guide us as we make decisions. Give us wisdom and knowledge and discernment so our choices honor you and your kingdom. God, continue to rain down blessings on Conroe ISD. I ask for safety for our students and campuses, peace and endurance for our teachers and staff, and boldness for our administrators. As we approach the Christmas season, help us to remember that you loved us so much that you gave us your one and only Son to die for our sins. Help us stay humble and seek you in all things. We love you and thank you in Jesus' name. Amen. Please join me in the pledge to the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And to the great state of Texas. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to be Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, trustees. Moving on to citizens' participation. Per Board Policy BED and Texas Government Code, Section 551.007, any citizen who has signed up may address the Board regarding only items posted on today's agenda. If a citizen has signed up to speak on any matter other than tonight's posted agenda items, he or she is welcome to make comments to the Board at the Board's regular meeting on December 17th, when the Board hears comments about both posted agenda items and non-agenda items. Each speaker will be given two minutes to present their comments to the Board. Screens around the room will display the speaker's time. When the countdown timer reaches zero, the next speaker will be called. Mrs. Godfrey, please call the first person to speak.
Alex Harris.
Dear Board, on the budget, there have been reports of too many administrators being hired at Conroe ISD. So we need a complete transparent independent financial audit by an auditor with no previous ties to Conroe ISD to identify such waste, if any. The auditor must also identify any investments and expenditures that are not optimized to benefit Conroe ISD and thus revealing a past potential bias. Regarding the gender fluidity matters, we need a policy to remove all gender fluid materials from Conroe ISD, one, two, enforce the use of pronouns based on biological sex, and three, inform parents immediately when a student displays gender confusion, which is a consequence of evolution of belief in the religion of atheism. Conroe ISD has had a bad track record of this in the past. Regarding Dr. Knoll's metrics and goals, he must, one, cut costs by identifying and removing waste expenditures at Conroe ISD, and, two, ensure Conroe ISD is free from any transgender ideology influence, and, three, propose ways to address the lack of discipline at Conroe ISD, which is a very serious problem today. Thank you.
Lynn Greaves.
Hi. I wish to talk on the topic of trans students and the harmful policies that I know some Board members have proposed in the past and are most likely going to be proposed again in the future. Throughout this, I'm going to be referencing a 2024 survey done by the Trevor Project, the leading suicide prevention organization for gay and trans youth within the U.S. More specifically, I'm going to be referencing statistics on suicide rates in trans youth. I know this is a dark topic that some of you may not want to hear, but I feel the need to inform you of the dangers some of these policies can have. According to the study, roughly half of trans youth have considered suicide, and roughly 16% or 1 in 6 trans kids have attempted suicide. As I'm sure you can agree, this needs to be reduced. The survey also asked questions about conditions in these children's lives, such as whether people use their preferred pronouns or if they have access to a gender-neutral restroom. Of those who the majority of people use preferred pronouns for, 11% have attempted suicide, as opposed to 20% for those who are referred to by pronouns based on their assigned sex. Mandating use of pronouns that do not match the gender identity of these children will effectively double the risk of them attempting suicide. Concerning restrooms, trans youth with access to gender-neutral restrooms they can use instead of ones that match their assigned sex are 6% less likely to commit suicide. Something small like being able to use a gender-neutral restroom can make a huge difference. Now, every year in the U.S., around 700,000 LGBT children try to end their own lives, averaging one attempt every four to five seconds. On average, that means at least two gay and/or trans children have committed suicide in the time I have been talking so far. Sooner or later, that is going to be someone from this school district. There are hundreds of children under your jurisdiction who are currently at risk of suicide. It is your job to prevent that. You have run anti-suicide campaigns in the past. Now let your actions match your words. That is all.
Anne Marie Kennedy.
I'm Anne Marie Kennedy, mother of a Conroe ISD graduate, grandmother to three, who call me Gigi. One in kindergarten, one in early education, and one who you guys won't see for a few years. I'd like to talk about reading and learning readiness and interventions when our children aren't meeting developmental milestones. Children need to play and move, yet they have gym two to three times a week, and often it's canceled for something else. Children need to overcome what are called retained primitive reflexes. You know, when they can't cross their hand to the other side of their body. It can be taught, and at that point, learning abilities and reading abilities are greatly increased. Or those kids at WCIT, they're at high risk and noted to be poor readers, have dyslexia, and it can be helped with activity and movement. It can also help kids with speech delays, ADHD, dyslexia. What doesn't, I have other things, but what doesn't help with reading and learning is the Blue Blonik curriculum, which only applies to some Christians and excludes the many other religions in Conroe ISD. While the ISDs can volunteer to accept the curriculum, students can't without being socially ostracized as the child who says no. Children already get left out or bullied for not being Christian here. And we do not need Conroe ISD to orchestrate it with this curriculum. Thank you.
Tina Orbal. Diane Daniels.
Good evening. Congratulations to our newly elected members. I am very encouraged by all the members being so qualified and understanding the needs of the Conroe ISD community, listening to the community that elected you for wanting to get back to the basics of reading, writing, and arithmetic with an emphasis on God. We are truly blessed to have you all looking out for the best interest of all of our children. Thank you for your commitment to serve. Thank you for getting right to work and showing the community you are all truly committed to fixing the issues in our schools. I am sure you all know that our teachers are overworked and underpaid. Find money for teacher's aides to assist the overworked teachers. Teachers need to teach, not babysit or fill out tons of administrative paperwork. Let them teach and see the learning grow automatically through the relationships that they build with their students, not through AI, which has no eye contact or feeling or warmth or a smile of encouragement to a person. Don't teach to a test. This is nonsense. It ultimately means nothing to the ability of the student. Teach for the child to learn, not to push an agenda for federal funding. Again, congratulations to all these ladies. You have endured a lot to get where you are, and I appreciate each and every one of you and the talents and professionalism that you will be bringing to this Board. Stay strong in your beliefs that got you here. God bless you all, and I look forward to this chapter of Conroe ISD and the many positive changes that you will be proceeding forward with. Thank you.
Susan Scruggs.
Good evening, Board members and Dr. Knoll. Last month, I was not able to get up and speak and tell you how excited I am and congratulate the new Board members. So congratulations to all the new Board members, Trustee Horton, Trustee similar, Trustee Dawson, and Trustee May. Thank you very much for your sacrifice and everything that y'all did and went through to get where you are today. We really appreciate your efforts. I read the agenda for tonight and was very encouraged to see item number four, which I'm hoping is a discussion toward developing the removal of any materials which contain information, instructions, or references to chemical and/or surgical gender mutilation. I know that Spring Branch, Katie, and Keller ISDs have successfully developed a comprehensive policy for gender fluidity, and I'm hoping that that is able to be established here. I also see that you will be establishing a vision statement and setting forth goals to strive for during your tenure. These are very positive endeavors, and I just am thankful that y'all are going forward and working so hard to try and get these things done. I did want to read something to you. Finally, brothers and sisters, whatever is true, whatever is noble, whatever is right, whatever is pure, whatever is lovely, whatever is admirable, if anything is excellent or praiseworthy, think about such things. So as you're getting the flaming arrows and you're getting criticism, concentrate on those things. Thank you.
Carolyn Nene.
I don't have anything prepared for tonight. Shocking, right? But I have a proposal. I would like for our new Board of Trustees to think about doing maybe quarterly a town hall meeting with our community. And I think that this would add an extra volume of transparency for parents and grandparents and those of us in the community who are very concerned about our children and kind of riding the ship once again. I think it, even though we come up here and we give our speeches and we talk to y'all, and I know you listen, there needs to be some dialogue, and I think that would be a healthy thing to do. And as I said, it would be on a quarterly, you know, this is not anything that you're going to have to do monthly, trust me. But, you know, just giving us an idea of where we're going and that we can ask questions and we can get answers. So I would like for y'all to please talk amongst yourselves, see if this is something that you would like to do. I think we, as a community, would love it. And, you know, this is just all about the kids. And let's pull together, not just the seven of you, but the entire community. Let's pull together and let's do the heavy lifting. Let's get this done. Thank y'all so much.
Erin Miller.
Hello. I am a stakeholder in this district, not only as a taxpayer, but as a parent of Conroe ISD students. We moved to Spring so that our children could be educated in the top-rated public schools of Conroe ISD. This district is outstanding because of its incredible teachers and staff and the diverse population of students, but above all, it is incredible because of its leadership. Dr. Knoll is a grounded, calm, generous educator and administrator who puts the students of Conroe ISD first. Dr. Knoll has faced many challenges since 2018, the exponential growth of our district, the terrifying COVID years, and the nonsense from the last two years at the Board meetings. Through all of it, he's exemplified grace, leadership, and compassion. His communication through district videos and personal forums has given our family peace of mind through some of the chaos. Dr. Knoll should be recognized for his leadership, his connection to teachers, and his interest in student success. He's been named Most Admired CEO of 2024 from the Houston Business Journal. Conroe ISD is ranked 37th among America's Best Large Employers by Forbes. That is by design. That is leadership. My hope tonight is that the Board's goals for the district and superintendent ensure that Dr. Knoll is set up for further successes. We must have a great leader to, and I quote, "improve student outcomes, enhance teacher work environments, and strengthen parent-teacher relationships." As a stakeholder and employer, excuse me, as a stakeholder and a taxpayer, I ask that you value our leader as much as I do and ensure that our district remains top-rated so that Montgomery County continues to grow. I urge you to remember Conroe ISD's motto tonight when discussing the goals and student welfare agenda items. All means all. Thank you.
Tina Orbal.
Hi. I really didn't have anything planned, but we've gone this far. We are in, we had liberal governments, and now we have a liberal school. We used to be one of the conservative schools. Now we're one of the most liberal schools. And it's led by somebody that is making this okay. It is not okay. It is not okay for boys using girls' bathrooms and vice versa. It is not okay for sexual books in the elementary school. This has been going on for years now, four to five years. So it's not okay. And we have been led by somebody that has made it okay. So if we really want to get down to the nitty-gritty and we really want to put our forces in and make it so that we are going to make changes, we're going to hit some balls. But we have to pursue, and we have to pursue to make these changes. I love y'all, and I honestly think that you've got the toughest job in the world and the least pay. But I am really worried about the longer this goes on, the more it's not going to change. It's just going to keep going on and on. Yeah, 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 yeah. It's okay. So God bless you all. I, you're in my heart, in my soul. Go, go, girls. Thank you. Bye.
Okay, moving on to agenda item number three, action items. Dr. Knoll and I had a conversation earlier today, and he has asked that we remove items A, B, and C, consider and award the RFPs that are listed from tonight's agenda, and the trustees have agreed so that more robust vetting process can take place. And that brings us to item four, and which is on the agenda for discussion. I'd like to take just a moment to bring a little bit of clarity to how we're operating, the trustees would like to operate going forward. I'd like to explain that the Board work sessions are an opportunity for us to dive deeper into important issues, share ideas, and gather input from various perspectives. While Board meetings on the third Tuesday of each month will remain focused on formal decision-making, these work sessions will be a space for collaborative dialogue and problem-solving. We are excited about this shift because it allows us to engage in thoughtful conversation without the constraints of a more structured meeting format. It is also a chance for the trustees to ask questions, seek clarity, and learn from experts in various fields, those outside of our district and those inside of our district, and have it be transparent and public. We want to encourage an open and respectful exchange of ideas, which we hope will lead to more informed decision-making down the line. Our first item up for our first workshop, our work session, is discussion for our preliminary budget, is A, receive preliminary budget, 2025-2026 budget overview. The Conroe Independent School District Board of Trustees will receive an overview from Karen Garza, our Chief Financial Officer. Hold on one second, Ms. Garza. Dr. Knoll, did you get copies of those for us, of the slides? No? Okay, thank you. I just wanted to double-check. That's okay. That's okay. That's all right. Thank you very much. My misreading. I'm sorry. Okay, thank you, Ms. Garza.
Good evening, President Odenweller, members of the Board, and Dr. Knoll. It is my pleasure this evening to provide you with an update on our preliminary 25-26 budget. Before we get started this evening, I would like to recognize our budget and accounting staff that are here this evening. Without this group of people, this would not be possible. When I share information with you on the budget, it's typically at a higher level. These people behind me are the group that takes that budget and then allocates it to the tens of thousands of lines necessary to ensure that the funding is in the proper place. So I want to recognize our staff this evening. Our Director of Finance, Cindy Westrop, is here. They're hiding in the back row. Our two Assistant Directors, Janice Stowers and Desiree Smith, are here, and then our Senior Accountant, Rachel Battaglia. So I'm so thankful to have such a supportive team behind me that makes this happen. And then also, I'd like to thank Dr. Medford and her team for their assistance thus far in the development of the 25-26 budget. Her expertise has been invaluable through this process, and at the end of the day, we're just trying to do what's best for kids. So hopefully, you'll find the information helpful tonight. We're going to do a little bit of education at the front of the presentation. Some of this might be familiar to our new trustees. We went through an abbreviated version of this at the orientation, but we'll dive a little bit deeper into a few of the topics, and then we'll start the information about our 25-26 budget. Would you, sorry, would you rather us save questions until the end or jump in? We can discuss as we go on if you have questions. Absolutely. All right, so first, I wanted to start off with our awards. This is something that we are very proud of as a district. Our two newest awards at the upper right-hand corner of the slide are from the Texas Association of School Business Officials. This is for our Purchasing Award of Merit and our Excellence in Financial Management. Moving to the left side of the slide, these are two national awards from the ASBO and GFO Associations recognizing us for our presentation of the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. We have received these awards for over 20 years. And then on the lower right is, of course, our School First Rating. At the October public hearing, we shared information about our first rating and 22nd consecutive year that the district has received the highest possible rating from the School First Report. And then in the center of the screen, you'll see our Transparency Stars. These are from the Texas Comptroller's Office. Our most recent star is the Open Government and Compliance Star. I want to thank Dr. Blakelock and her team for their assistance in helping us secure this star. And I would like to add that Conroe ISD is one of over 1,200 school districts in the state of Texas that only has four stars. So no other district in the state has four Transparency Stars. So this shows the district's dedication to transparency, to our community and our stakeholders, and then our excellence in financial reporting. So I wanted to share that information with you tonight before we get started. All right, so looking at our agenda this evening, we're going to talk at kind of a high level of how the budget is actually developed. We're going to dive a little bit deeper into Tier 2 pennies and explain the relationship between our Maintenance and Operations Tax Rate and the state calculated entitlement. We're going to do a quick overview of our 24-25 budget, and then we're going to look at our 25-26 preliminary budget. We're going to go into a discussion about our over 65 hold harmless calculation that we've spoken about over the last few weeks. With regard to the tax office, I have some special guests here this evening that will help facilitate that conversation. And then we're going to look briefly at the 89th Legislative Session. So moving into the budget development process, so how is our budget developed? There's two major components to our budget. Obviously, the revenue is the first thing that we start to look at. And much like you would with your own personal finances when you get ready to start making a decision about spending money, some of the questions you might ask yourself is how much money is coming in on a monthly or an annual basis? And then how much money do we have in our savings account, which we would refer to as our fund balance? And then we look at legislative changes that might impact the revenue that would be coming in for the upcoming budget of the year. And then we look at the expenditure side of the budget. What is our projected enrollment? That number drives the majority of the decisions that we will make as a district in terms of budgeting for the upcoming school year. The largest decisions, of course, being our campus allocations. And then we move into our support department allocations. And then look at some of our other larger expenditure categories, such as property insurance, fuel for our buses, utilities, et cetera. And then, of course, are there any legislative changes that will impact the expenditure side of the budget? So these are our 24-25 budget assumptions that we used when we adopted the budget this past August. Our student enrollment projection was 74,000 students. We used an average daily attendance percentage of 92.5%. What this represents is the number of days that students are present in school divided by the number of actual days of instruction. Our certified property value growth came in at 8.36%, which then generated a tax rate of .9496, which was a decrease of just over a penny. Sorry, just real quick. Sure. Can you tell me, how is the ADA percentage, how has that changed over time? So prior to COVID, we were running right around 94.5% pretty consistently. And then when the pandemic hit, we dropped down below 92%. But we have been hovering right around 92.5% for the last three years. And this is a trend that we have seen statewide with many districts that they have lost about 2% in ADA since the pandemic. So for every 1% in ADA that we lose, that's an additional $5 million in funding. So we've been essentially operating with $10 million less since the pandemic, just based on attendance percentage drop. So now, looking at our savings account, one of the things that we have is a stated goal that we like to maintain, just like you would with your personal finances, a certain portion of your annual expenditures in your savings account. Our stated goal is between 20 and 25%. So that would put our goal at around $142.4 million. We are projecting an unassigned fund balance at $831.24 of $156.5 million. So this puts us with capacity moving into the current school year, which we're currently in, of $14.1 million or 22% of our annual expenditures. Now, keep in mind, we did adopt a deficit budget coming into this current year, so we do anticipate possibly using some of that savings account. So now, looking at our major revenue sources, there's two primary places that our revenue comes from, the first being our local property tax collections, and then the second being our state funding, which has flowed through the Foundation School Program. This is our tax rate history for the last five years. Our adopted tax rate for tax year '24 was .9496. That tax rate is made up of two components. There is a Maintenance and Operations component to that tax rate and a debt service component. So for every 95 cents in taxes that we collect, roughly 67 cents goes into our Maintenance and Operations bucket that provides our day-to-day operations of the district, such as salaries and benefits. And then 28 cents goes into our debt service bucket, which then supports the principal and interest payments on the debt that we have issued. So this is our enrollment trend over the last 10 years. Based on what we're seeing so far this year, we are projecting enrollment of 73,300 students and then using an additional 1,000 student growth for '25-26. Taking a closer-- Sorry. Yes. Do you count enrollment at the beginning of the year, middle, and like, when is that? TEA has an official snapshot date that they use, which is the last Friday in October that establishes our official enrollment for the year. Now, we know that we will continue to grow as the year goes on and as students enroll, they do generate funding for us. But in terms of official enrollment for the year, that's based on snapshot date.
So to that point, Ms. Garza, because we spoke about the October snapshot, where were we at, if you can remind me?
This slide right here is going to talk about kind of where we're at currently. So we had budgeted enrollment growth at 74,000 students total enrollment for '24-25. At snapshot, we were right around 73,000 students. So still growing, but not at the pace that we had projected. But what we are seeing is the students that are coming to us are students that are requiring more services. more services.
But that aside, we're still roughly 1,000 under?
We are 1,000 under, although we do anticipate continuing to grow. We saw this kind of same trend last year. We did grow after snapshot, and we do anticipate an influx of kids after Christmas. Now, probably not 1,000 kids, but that's where we were saying 74-3 is probably where we think we'll end up at the end of the year.
And that's the difference of $4 million in funding, right?
Well, it is a difference in funding, however, based on what we're seeing here, the kids that are coming to us are needing more specialized services.
But that aside, but that's--
Right. So even though actual enrollment growth has not grown at the pace that we had thought, the kids that are coming to us are generating weighted funding. So we will make up any loss in revenue as a result of being down 700 kids, just by the kids that are coming to us that are in the Special Ed program, in our bilingual program. So this is a 10-year history of our average daily attendance compared to our weighted average daily attendance. And that weighted average daily attendance number takes into account all of the weighted funding that we receive for those specialized services. So you can see that that gap compared to '16-17, to where we're at in '24-25, and looking forward to '25-26, how that gap is widening. Does that make sense? So this is a slide that was shared by Commissioner Marath at the October 9 Senate Finance Committee, just showing statewide growth in special education and what they're seeing at a statewide level. 72% increase in the number of special education students since the year 2014-15. This is what we are seeing as a district. If we reach our projected number for '25, we will have seen 110% growth in special education just over the last seven years. So they're looking at 72% growth for the last 10 years at a statewide average. We're looking at 110 if we meet our projected target for '25. So this is an area that we all know that we are seeing tremendous growth in. And of course, with the additional special ed students, obviously, there's a need to hire teachers, but then all of the supports that come along with providing services to those students, such as speech therapy, occupational therapy, et cetera. So now, looking at our revenue projections, one of the ways that I like to illustrate our revenue, when we look at our projections, is thinking of our total revenue, both combined state and local, as a glass. So our state calculated entitlement determines the size of our glass. So how do we increase the size of our glass? An increase in the basic allotment, obviously, would increase the size of our glass. That does require legislative action. If we enroll more students, that increases the size of our glass. But with more students comes the need for more teachers and more support staff. Additional Tier Two pennies, those golden copper pennies, would help us increase the size of the glass. And then, as we spoke earlier, in increasing the attendance rate, every percentage point that we can get that attendance rate up is worth $5 million in additional funding to us. So now, I want to talk a little bit about how our Maintenance and Operations Tax Rate interacts with that entitlement calculation that is done by the Texas Education Agency. There's two components to our Maintenance and Operations Tax Rate. There's a Tier One component, also known as the Maximum Compressed Rate, or the MCR. This is the portion of our tax rate that is set by the Texas Education Agency. Every summer after our values are certified by the Montgomery Central Appraisal District, we report those numbers to the Texas Education Agency, and they return the tax rate to us. So this .6196 is a number given to us by the Texas Education Agency based on tax compression at the state level. The .05 cents is our Tier Two pennies. Those are the five golden pennies that we currently are accessing, and those two together make up our MNO tax rate. So if we think about that glass, so I talked about the entitlement determines the size of the glass. So there is a Tier One component of that entitlement calculation that is essentially made up of our average daily attendance and all of the weighted funding that we receive for those students. And then there's a Tier Two component of that entitlement calculation. That is our weighted average daily attendance times the guaranteed yield for those golden pennies, which is currently $129.52, times the number of golden pennies. So those two components of the entitlement calculation determine how much combined state and local revenue that we will receive. And then our tax rate comes into play. There's a Tier One component of our tax rate that we just discussed, that MCR component, and then there's the Tier Two, which is those golden pennies. So the Tier One portion of our tax rate interacts with the Tier One portion of the entitlement calculation, and the Tier Two portion of our tax rate interacts with the Tier Two portion of the entitlement. So what happens is our local tax collections fill up the glass first, and then the state fills in the rest. So if we look at how this played out for the actual '24-25 budget year, our Tier One entitlement was projected to be $590.5 million, based on that attendance data. And then our Tier Two pennies, those golden pennies, generated a $60 million entitlement. So our total entitlement, both state and local combined, is $650.5 million. The Tier One portion of our tax rate is projected to generate $343.3 million in tax collections, and that Tier Two portion will generate 28 million. So those things go into the, I'm sorry, those things go into the glass first, and then the state fills in the green portion. So the green portion is the actual cash that we will receive from the state. The blue portion is what we are collecting locally. So if you'll recall, a few years ago, when we had local tax growth in our area of roughly 21%, we were filling the glass much higher than we would have been normally. So this is how the state ended up with the surplus that they did going into the last legislative session. So now, putting this all together for '24-25, that's our total entitlement of $650.5 million. We are projected to generate 371.3 of that through local tax collections, and then the state will kick in the rest, the 279.2 million. So now, taking a closer look at these Tier Two pennies, one of the things that we like to do is look at how we compare spending-wise to our peer districts in terms of functional areas and overall spending per student. This is based on '22-23 audited financial data that has been reported to the Texas Education Agency. And you'll see for that year, we are spending $9,123 in the General Operating Fund per student, compared to some of our surrounding districts like Humble. Humble is spending $9,863, and Katy spending over $10,000 per student. And we often get asked the question, well, why can't we spend at the level that Humble and Katy do? And I'm going to show you kind of how that happens. So here is our peer district tax rate comparison. You'll see we're at the far right at .949--
Could you go back one slide?
Sure.
Really quickly. Thank you.
If I can just point, I'll point out a couple of things on here that we note, right? Because there's a lot of numbers, right? But things that I think stand out. First of all, transportation is one. You can see, based on our geography and the fact that we drive more kids than anybody else around here, we spend much more on transportation, and we could all agree that we'd like it to be even better, but it's not for lack of investment. We are investing there at a much higher rate. You know, if you just look percentage-wise, like if we were able to be operating at a percent compared to maybe a Humble or Katy, that'd be like $15 million back into our budget, right? But that's just not, that's not our reality. We're 348 square miles. We are going to spend a lot in transportation, but that's just part of doing business for us. You know, one of the things that we are proud of is, you know, if you look, general administration, we're the lowest percentage on the chart. That's something that we've worked to maintain as well. So there are areas, and I'm sure, I mean, I don't know everybody else's situations, but I'm sure they probably have situations like our transportation situation that caused them to spend more in certain areas than we don't have to. But it's, there's a couple of areas that--
Thank you for pointing that out. I was actually looking more at SciFairs, because they're a larger district than us. And I'm not, call me competitive, but they're beating us.
Beating us where? Not academically?
No, no, that's good. That's true. I'm just saying operating total per student.
Yeah, indeed. Yes, they are. They spend less, but--
Yeah. But we're beating--
But the other thing I would point out on this chart is if we put the academic scores up here, we would either be first or second in every single category on this chart.
Yeah, that's good.
What about with facilities maintenance? That one's a bit high compared to others.
So I think the answer there is these other school districts are more aggressive with their bond programs. So, you know, we tend to be reactionary with our bond programs, where they are more proactive. They will include more items, long-term replacement items, chillers, those types of things, and they're more proactive, where we, so they're replacing things before they break. We have a lot of instances where those are items that get cut from our bonds as we pare them down, and then they end up breaking, and we have to pay to replace them out of our general operating budget. So, you know, that when you think long-term about how do you free up more money out of your MNO budget to be able to put it into the classroom, that is a way, right? Is to be more aggressive in bond programs, because it would free up MNO money.
Are you saying that they're putting those things in their bonds and we're not?
They are, and we do, but we don't, not to the same level. So they're just more aggressive with it, and they're more proactive. You know, when you look at like our last two bonds, for example, we started this last bond, and let me go back, because the numbers are a little different, but we, if you go back to 2019, we had an $800 million bond to start with, but we had $1.5 billion worth of need. So we left that 700 million out. This last bond, we did a $2 billion bond, which was giant, but the need number was over $3 billion. So there's just that gap there. And part of it has just been us trying to keep up. And we've had, you know, as we see with the tax rates, as we saw a while ago, we've just had the mentality here, previous boards, not judging them, did a great job for what they did, but we've just always had the mentality of the answer is always the lowest tax rate. It's always been the right answer, and that creates a little bit of that long-term inefficiency, I guess you would say.
Okay. Did that help?
All right, so in the blue portion of the tax rates that are displayed on the screen, you'll see each district, I've got represented here the number of Tier Two pennies that they are accessing. So if you look at Humble ISD and Katy ISD, for instance, Katy is accessing 11 of those Tier Two pennies, and Humble is accessing nearly 14 of those Tier Two pennies. So if we look at--
Sorry, could you go back?
Sure.
So are you saying, so I see we're on the far right-hand side. So are you saying that our taxpayers are paying less than all of these other districts that you're flagging?
Well, yeah, our tax rate is the lowest.
I'm talking about taxes, like, yeah, property values is what I'm trying--
Well, property values are going to vary by district. Property values are going to vary by district. I wouldn't know off the top of my head what the average property value is for each of these districts, but--
I do think we need to be clear, though, that we have higher property values in this area than these other districts do.
But that does not impact our revenue in any way. That has no impact on our revenue. It impacts the amount that the state would fill our cup. It does not change the size of our cup. The only place on this chart where our property values impacts the amount of money we receive is in the green portion, which is in the bonded indebtedness side. So in our state funding, it doesn't, the amount of property value doesn't change what we receive. It does change what--
But it changes what they're paying.
Absolutely it does. But it doesn't change what we receive. So it's not a, it doesn't change how we compare to other districts.
But is that where the emphasis has come in the past on keeping that tax rate low?
No, I just think it's we're in a conservative community that's always valued a low tax rate.
Because keeping it low, you're applying that to a higher-value property.
Yeah, I just think in general, it's been about keeping it low. You know, it doesn't, it doesn't, if we increased it, we would be increasing the size of our cup, so we would actually get more funding had we increased it in the past. So once again, it's just a--
It's a driver.
It's a driver. And just to make the point, like I was making the point earlier about other districts being more aggressive with bonding programs, that's visible here. So you can see our bonded indebtedness tax rate is 28 cents. SciFairs is 40. So they, you know, their bond programs are significantly bigger, and you see the other districts, how they compare as well. So that's just a visual of what we were just talking about as well, the green bars.
And just to point out, we cannot get more from the state unless we exercise more of our pennies.
It's--
And the only way to exercise those pennies would be then to go to the taxpayers. They have to decide to do a tax increase.
Good. At the current, under the current law, that would be the way.
And some of these--
Unless there were disaster pennies.
Yes.
And some of these that have exercised all of their golden pennies, exercised them under a different timeframe or the whole ramifications of how it works on getting your funding from the state.
They did it way back in the day.
Yes. And so now, for us, because we were always trying to keep it, you know, lower, now we're in a situation where if we want to get any more funding, we'd have to go to the taxpayers to get more funding.
And unless they change, and that's something that can change at any biennial. You know, a few years ago, they did give local school boards the ability to access an additional golden penny, and we did that. That's how we got number five.
That was during COVID, correct?
Post-COVID. And what they did is they, or I guess it was maybe it was right before COVID, 2019.
It was before COVID, 2019.
Yeah, 2019, 18, 19. They changed some rules, and they made it where we, districts were using some golden pennies to pay off some debt. It was a neat accounting trick, but they cut that out. We had to cut it out, so we had to move some pennies around as well. But that, something could change, like they could pass a law this legislative session that says local school boards have the ability to access an additional golden penny without going to Vator. So that could change by law. Under current law, you have the maximum that you can access without asking the voters, but they could change that in a law.
And there were a few bills introduced in the last session that had that option in there for us to access the sixth one, but none of that stuff made it across the finish line. So like you said, it is something that is possible, that they would allow us to access that sixth penny with board approval without having to go to the voters.
We should have added that to our legislative priority. Actually, I think it's very valuable that we, at this point, do need to ask our voters for their input, just like we do with our bonds. They need to buy in, they need to have a say, and with us being transparent with them about our needs and where we plan to use it, then theoretically, we would hope they'd be supportive of the schools and that option. So it's a, I mean, it's, one's easier than the other, but at the same time, they both have merits.
Are you talking about a Vator or are you talking about a survey to ask the voters?
No, a Vator is still asking a voter.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking. What are you specifically saying?
Yeah, so I'm just saying if a Vator was out, that's still technically a survey of asking for a vote on it.
You're saying before a Vator, right?
No. So I'm saying that, what she was saying was a good point. It's easier if you don't have to ask, and I agree that statement. However, I do think there's merit and value in asking, so.
Yeah, there's definitely more an entailed process between the two.
And considering, you know, additional tax compression that we know is coming, we could still see a tax rate increase even with a Vator in the mix. So, you know, in terms of asking voters for an additional penny, if we see a compression of an additional 3.5 cents, they would still see an additional 2.5 cent decrease in their tax rate. So it kind of, you know, puts us at a little bit of an advantage in terms of asking the question now, but it's something that we could definitely consider. All right, so moving on with the Tier Two pennies, like you saw on the previous slide, we are currently accessing five of the eight that are available. They are worth $12 million each, and then the copper pennies are worth $4.6 million to us. We are accessing no copper pennies at this time, and you can see the formula for each of the pennies below and how that is calculated in that Tier Two entitlement. So if we were to look at an example of what would happen if we were to have the same number of pennies as a neighboring district that, say, has 11 of those Tier Two pennies, that would generate an additional $50 million for us, which would, of course, increase the size of that glass. So our total entitlement at both state and local combined would just have grown from $650 to $700 million. So we're still educating the same 73,000 students, but now we've got $50 million more to do it. And so this is how, you know, some of those districts are spending more money than we are per student. So if you look at our 24-25 adopted budget with a deficit of $11.8 million, if we had those 11 Tier Two pennies, our entitlement would have grown from $650 to $700 million, which would have put us at a surplus of $38.4 million, which would have allowed us to hire additional staff, provide raises, so on and so forth. And this is assuming we had 11. You know, 11's a lot. That's a high jump from five. But just to kind of illustrate to you how the additional funding is generated for those districts that have more of those Tier Two pennies. So this is how they're able to spend over $10,000 per student, because they have a larger cup, but they're still educating the same number of students. cup, but they're still educating the same number of students. So now moving on to the expenditure side of the budget, as I mentioned earlier, that total enrollment number is the major assumption that drives many, many of the decisions that we make as we move into the budget process. There is a campus allocations process that we go through with Dr. Medford and her team. Once we take that 74,000 student number and allocate it to all the campuses by grade level and even by program to determine where we think all of those students are land, are going to land, we go through a very tedious process where we are essentially zero-based budgeting. Every campus is reset back to straight formula. We look at staffing, where we end up, then we kind of consolidate that in summary and look at what the cost is going to be district-wide to see if we can fit it into our big picture projections in terms of what revenue we have coming in, if we can, if we can afford it. And then, once we're done with our campus staffing allocations, we move on to our departments. Are we opening new campuses? Do we need to hire additional custodians to staff those new campuses? Do we need to add additional bus routes that would require bus drivers? So on and so forth. So any support positions that are needed to support any student enrollment growth that comes in. Once those two components are in place and then all of the compensation that goes along with it, that accounts for 90% of our budget. Then we start looking at the other big ticket items, property insurance, fuel for our buses, supplies for our campuses, utilities, so on and so forth. This is an example of a staffing formula for a K4 campus. This just kind of shows you the level of detail that we go through to actually staff our campuses. So we're making sure that staffing is equitable across all campuses based on that projected enrollment number. We have a staffing formula chart like this for every one of our grade spans. So K6 has a separate one, 56 has a separate one, junior high, high school, and so on. One of the things that we have to keep in mind as we're developing that overall budget is there are spending requirements associated with each of those special programs? Yes.
Can, can we go back?
Sure.
When you said that we start with zero budgeting at the beginning of planning this, you said that we, the first thing we look at is staffing.
Correct.
And then I noticed that it was like four down the road, it's supplies. Well, I think it was four moves forward. Where, are we not budgeting or why are we not budgeting starting with the student in the classroom, the teacher expense, and all that is needed to educate that student before moving out to the next circle?
Sure. And I'm not saying that the supplies are less important than staffing. It's just that staffing is our largest ticket item and is the most time-constraining item in terms of getting it set up for the next school year. Now, in terms of staffing, we use the same process, or supplies. We, we do a per-student allocation for every campus based on that projected enrollment number to provide them supplies for the library, supplies for their counseling center, supplies for the classroom. It's all done on a per-student basis so that every campus is getting equitable funding when it comes to the general operating fund in terms of what their projected enrollment is going to be.
So who is, or not who, but how do you go about determining what those needs are for the supplies for the student in the classroom? And I'm not necessarily just speaking papers, pencils, et cetera. I'm talking about all the other instructional things that so often our teachers end up paying for out of their own pocket when it comes to instruction. As simple, I know this is gonna sound petty, but as simple as the supplies for special manipulatives or items that help with instruction, I know we give an allotment of certain mathematical manipulatives, et cetera, et cetera, but there's a lot that our teachers use in a classroom. And I'm wondering how we can take that better into where, at what point do we find that out or who goes about figuring that out so that it becomes part of that immediate student, classroom, teacher need? That there first and then moving outwards. And I see you moving to your, the mic.
Oh, I think I'm green. So that, that's, the campus principal really spends the most time on that. I, I know I can speak to, like, for example, science experiments, right? Those always use a lot of, of things, whether it's rubber bands or a food product if they're doing an experiment. So all of those things are planned out for the year because we have the scope and sequence and we know what's coming and what we need to do. And then sometimes there's, we realize there's something new, right? That a teacher found that they want to use and they need supplies for. So then we'll, we'll budget, we'll know that's coming for next year and, and budget those things that way. So all of those individual things are really done at the campus level because they kind of know what they have in inventory already so that they can reuse it and we can be most efficient, right, at the campus level.
So why is it that they're, they're spending so mu, I mean, I taught, I know how much I spent out of my, well, I don't remember now, but I know it was a lot. So why is it that they are having to spend so much out of their pocket and out of their own money to, to fund these different things in the classroom?
I think there's probably a bunch of different reasons, truthfully. I, I would say the honest answer is because they have really high expectations and they want the best and they want, they, they do. And so they realize that there's a finite amount here and then I want to do this extra thing and, and they choose to do that. And so it's a lot of different, whether that's furniture, right? Because they want to have a nice seating area or they want to do this next experiment. Those, those are kinds of things that, that happen, but they, they understand that here's the, here's the pocket of money, just like your, right, your Christmas budget, right? Here's what, here's what I have. I wish I could do more. Some of them make the choice to do.
My kids have had, like, their teachers have had the Amazon wishlist that has literally had tissue on it. So why, why, why are they needing that?
Well, I don't, I don't necessarily, I can't answer. Everyone's so different, right? A lot of times, sometimes I used to have to tell my teachers to remind them to ask me when I was a campus principal, like, you, you look up and you're like, why didn't you ask me? Right? So sometimes that happens, but sometimes it's because parents want to help and we add things to the list that we know are easy to grab, right? That everybody can participate in and add to the camp, the classroom collection. So there's a, and then I don't ask my principal for that, so I can ask him for this because I know my parents want to help. So I think there's that balance of knowing the parents want to participate and that's an easy way to help. And then what do I need to, to keep everything going?
Yeah. So is there some sort of communication that occurs between the classroom teachers and the principal annually, yearly, or even semi-annually, that they can maybe get a better understanding so they can apply that to the next year's budget?
That's always the goal. And, and they have those conversations all the time. The best part about a teacher though, is they're constantly looking for new things. So that's why those things happen, happen all the time. Those are usually, again, I'm speaking for when I was a principal, but I know that's what a lot of my colleagues did. It's at the end of the year, kind of like April, you're like, okay, what did you wish you had this year? What did you realize that you wanted so that I can then, as I'm planning my budget for next year, no? So they do a really good job of constantly asking, but we have to remind, I had to remind them all the time, like, y'all, please ask me. So it's, it's just a constant learning and growing.
Is, oh, sorry. I didn't realize you were silent.
Do our teachers have an individual classroom budget every year where they can kind of individualize their own classroom or are all the supplies already allocated?
So we, as a district, we give the campus the amount of money and they kind of decide. So every principal kind of runs it differently. A lot of times they'll say like each classroom has this amount of money or they can do it by department, right? It just kind of depends on, on what the needs are, but each, each teacher doesn't get a line item of X number of dollars.
Some principals do it by grade level, like they'll give their first grade team a certain amount of money and then the team lead decides how they want to divide that up.
It's not done the same way across the district.
It's site-based. Principals decide.
And there was like a website at one time where teachers could go and order, I mean, you were given X amount of dollars. I'm, you know, I know I received X amount of dollars, I could go use it on whatever. Is that still around where every teacher? I don't know if that was just at my school or if that was a district-wide program, but it was, I guess maybe back in 2019, 2020? Is that?
I'm not sure.
That would have counted. So they just gave the money for each teacher? So each campus decides?
And so, and the campuses all have structures in place for that communication that you're asking about. So you have things like core team where there are department chair, you know, structures, campus improvement teams that, so there are a lot of different structures where they're meeting with the principals on all, you know, getting this feedback, what do they need, all the things. The short answer to the big question you're asking, could we use more money in the supply? Yes. But yes, absolutely.
I'll, I'll just say that the one thing I probably hear most out of our teachers isn't so much as the pay increase. They'd get a pay increase if they didn't have to buy so much out of their own pockets. In other words, they'd have more left in their own pockets. So that's the reason why I'm asking the number of questions I am on it.
Married, married to a teacher.
Yeah. I could never part with my stuff because I know how much I spent when I was in the classroom. I still have it all.
All right. So moving back to our special programs, as I mentioned, one of the things that we have to consider is ensuring that we have funding in place to support the spending requirements that are required by statute. So if we receive a bilingual education allotment from the state, the state requires that we spend at least 55% of that directly on bilingual expenditures. So these are the things that we have to look at, at a kind of a consolidated level when we're establishing our budget each year to ensure that we are meeting those spending compliance requirements. So this is our 24, 25 adopted budget that the board adopted in August of this year. Total revenue of 700.07 million dollars and total expenditures of 711.9 for an estimated budget shortfall of 11.9 million dollars. One of the items that you're gonna see on every line item budget that we present to you is an incremental change in what we call TRS in-kind. There is always a matching revenue and expense line item for this. There's two components to the contributions that is made to the TRS fund. One of those is a member contribution. That is our employees are paying a certain percentage of their pay every two weeks to TRS. And then the state also has a contribution percentage that they match and put into the TRS fund. So we, along with all districts across the state of Texas, are required to record the state share of that contribution on our financial statements. So that incremental change that you're seeing every year is just to get our budget in line with what we need to do to record that entry. It makes no difference to the bottom line. It's always a matching revenue and expense entry for us.
A pass-through.
Correct. Correct. So looking at our deficit as a percent of our overall budget, I just wanted to kind of give some context to this. These are actual deficit budgets that were adopted this, this school year for some of our neighboring districts. And as you can see, our 11.9 million deficit, although a large number, represents less than 2% of our budget, but you can see the pathway to a balanced budget for some of these districts is going to be much more difficult than ours. Now, some of these districts have a much larger fund balance and they can afford to operate at a deficit year over year, but just kind of wanted to share this to kind of give some context to what that dollar amount actually means for us.
And props to you guys, to all of you guys for keeping, I mean, a deficit isn't fun for anybody and it's not desirable, but to be at that kind of outcome is really a tribute to you, especially when our tax rate is so much lower than the others. So, great job, guys.
Thank you. So how did we get here? Spring and summer of 2023 was the 88th legislative session. As we're all aware, no additional funding was provided. The basic allotment remained at $6,160. In August of 2023, we did pass a balanced budget. There was no employee raise provided at that time. In November of 2023, the bond package did pass. This allowed us to return $30 million to the general fund that was used to purchase land that was reimbursed from the bond. As a result of that, we did approve an employee raise of $15 million in November of 2023, knowing that we could support the raise for a couple of years because there was no revenue coming in to support that raise. We were gonna have to use fund balance. So as a result, in August of 2024, when we approved the budget, we adopted a $12 million deficit budget as a result of the raise. Fall of 2024, Dr. Medford and I and the rest of the team started planning for the 25, 26 budget year. In January, obviously, we're all aware the legislative session starts. And then in February, we will be working through the allocation process that we talked about earlier for our campuses to come up with a plan for 25, 26. And then we will release those allocations in the spring in time for the job fair so that our principals can begin to hire for the upcoming school year. And then we will adjust our plan in the spring based on any legislative action that happens as a result of the 89th legislative session.
Ms. Garza?
Yes.
Will you go back for a second? Thank you for there's no additional funding because you don't have any, well, you probably do have an idea, but how many times we hear we were not funded last year?
Right.
We weren't funded. We weren't, no, we were funded. We just didn't get additional funds, which is a big deal.
Correct.
But thank you for putting that on there for people to see because that's important for them to know and understand. So I wanted to say that. And also another thing I kept hearing was we haven't had a raise in three years. And there, and I kept saying, no, we did one in 23. That's why we are in the situation we're in. And I kept being told that. And now granted, it wasn't great. They didn't see a lot in their, their paycheck differential, but thank you for putting that in there again so that people could see it and I appreciate it.
You think about a district whose enrollment is flat since 2019, like the makeup of their students hasn't changed. They're receiving the exact same amount of money that they had since 2019. So how do you function in that environment? There is no mechanism to give a raise or address inflation in the current formulas as they are. So we are fortunate that we have experienced student growth that has generated a little bit of additional revenue for us, but like I said earlier, that results in more teachers being needed and support staff. So we've been able to make it just based on that. Of course, no raise. I mean, that's the biggest thing, but there is really no mechanism in the current formula to provide a raise to teachers.
And we definitely need to be working on that because it's not just the teachers, it's also across the board.
All staff, absolutely. Yes.
What, what percentage was that raise? November?
This one was two and a half percent.
Yeah.
Two and a half percent, yes.
Which is like the equivalent, well, you're coming to it.
It's below inflation.
I don't mean to-
Have they had stipends at all or since then or?
We have not.
Okay.
Wasn't there a stip, a retention stipend?
Or sorry?
The last time we did a retention stipend? I'd have to look back.
Okay. But we opted to do the raise in place of a stipend for two reasons. One, the, the stipend does not help them or affect their earning in their retirement. So by doing a raise, it, it may not have been a great amount, but it helps boost their, going in towards their retirement fund.
Gotcha. So now looking forward to 25, 26, these are our preliminary budget assumptions. We are very early on in this process. We're eight and a half months away from adopting a budget, so very early in this process, but we're looking at student enrollment of roughly 74,300 students. We're gonna maintain that 92.5% ADA percentage. And then we're gonna use certified property value growth pretty conservatively at 5%. And then our tax rate right now is projected to be .9447. Now, this is based on compression for tax year 24. The state has not released their tax year 25 compression calculation yet, so we do anticipate this rate going down even further, probably in the three to five cent range, depending on how our property value growth comes in.
How do you calculate the student enrollment going up when it's actually has gone down? Or not, it hasn't gone up as much as it's gotten?
Well, we originally were, we originally were projecting 75.5 a year ago when we were looking forward to 25, 26. So we have backed off that enrollment number kind of based on what we're seeing this year and using 1,000 student enrollment growth for the next year. And we'll, we'll continue to refine this number as we get closer, kind of seeing how this year plays out. If we, if we see a huge influx of kids after the start of the new year, we'll adjust enrollment accordingly, just based on-
Like what are you looking at though to, to figure out that number?
Well, we're-
Development, growth or?
All of it.
Okay.
We look at the demographic study. We look at just trends that we're seeing, rates. There's a, it's an educated guess is what it is. You know, there's a lot of data that goes into it, but there, there's a large risk[1694.11] You know, there's a lot of data that goes into it, but there's a large risk in that number on, on either side. Because if you shoot it too high, then you, you're going to be off on funding. What we did for a couple of years in a row post-COVID is we shot that number way too low. And so then what happened is we opened the school year and we needed about two hundred teachers that didn't exist in the world because we were short. We didn't hire enough teachers because we undershot the number. So it, we need to be as close to that as we can, but it's, there's just not an exact science, but.
I, sorry, did you get your? I wanted to go back to your, I know we've already discussed ADA percentage and the ninety-two point five based on what we've been seeing since post-COVID. But we've also been seeing some other things that have been affecting that because we got kind of lax in attendance in schools and not that ninety-two point five percent attendance is lax. I'm just saying we are, and it's lower than it was. That comes with two reasons. One, because people are paying more attention when the child isn't feeling as well or whatever. They're not sending their child. And we'd much prefer that than the alternative because that affects also our staffing with our staff getting sick and then needing to bring in more subs, which increases expenses. Anyway, that being said, we also, we are also seeing a trend of other things affecting it. Parents with travels during non-vacation days, which affects that. Also, our, the security threats that come across in campuses that affect parents keeping children home, which affects our ADA. So I'm wondering if maybe we should not, Dr. Knoll team, whatever, look at what we might do to bring awareness to that and the equivalent of what that means value-wise, dollar-wise to us as a district. It could make a significant impact because you said each percent is five million.
Five million.
Each percent is five million. If we just took that to ninety-three point five, that's five million. And I'm, I'm guessing, this is just a guess off the top of my head, not an educated guess, but I'm guessing that we probably could make up easily another percent or two if we made that more of a priority and, and a campaign of awareness.
What was that, what was that pre-COVID ADA percentage?
It was around ninety-four and a half.
Ninety-four and a half?
Yeah.
Have we done any, oh, sorry, go ahead.
That was, that was actually a question I had for later in the presentation, but what, what, what can we do to increase ADA per, is it a per-campus thing?
So actually, one of the things, so Dr. Taylor leads a committee of principals. It's our Student Support Services Committee. We have principals and district office staff that serve on that committee. And their project this year is attendance, so that's actually what they've been working on this fall. The goal is to kind of work through what are the different processes, learning what's going on. You talk about different things happening on different campuses and different grade levels. So they're looking at everyone's kind of practice. We're looking at all the coding that's allowed at the state. All of those different things are what they're researching right now with the goal of having a larger committee, including community and parents and all those things, to really start to dive in on the education side of it and then just really bringing back the emphasis. It felt a little inappropriate there for a while because we were dealing with so much, but it's time. And so that, that team's been working on that since early fall. So thanks for asking because shout out to that group. They're an amazing group of people that are really motivated.
Each student comes with dollar amounts. It's more instructional time as well.
Absolutely.
Instructional time that's taken away from our children and from the children's end affects their overall learning outcomes, and that's what we're all about.
Nothing replaces face-to-face time between a teacher and the kid, absolutely.
Some of it, too, the conversation starts with our own internal structures to make sure that we're not creating structures that impact that number. Like, for example, this, we have to identify a time of day in which you must be present. And so we need to, we need to, and we've been doing this, but analyzing our data to understand like, what is that time of day that would give us the highest percentage? Because some kids are coming late because they're coming from an appointment. Some kids leave early because they're going to an appointment.
What time do you take attendance?
Ten o'clock. It's ten, yeah.
And that's every campus, correct?
It is, it's, what?
Is that every campus because of our?
So it's, it's tiered. So we have, the high school does it during second block during that time, and then the, the intermediate groups do it at nine, and then elementary's nine, two. Okay, there you go.
So we're trying to study that to figure out, like, just make sure we're not creating the wrong moment in time, right? Or that, that we have the right structures in place, that we're, we're tracking it accurately, right? So that's, that's even the things we do internally. Before, it's the conversation about we need, we do need your child in the classroom. That's the, the next big piece of that, too, right?
Well, and speaking internally, I think also when you have, and I saw it in the calendar a lot last year and not as much this year, like a Tuesday off and families might go out of town on a Monday and just kind of avoiding those middle-of-the-week days.
The only, the only time we would take a middle-of-the-week day is, is Election Day. Like, this past year, we, we took Monday with it because we saw the previous time, everybody took Monday anyway.
Yeah, I think that was smart.
And then, you know, when we do calendar development as well, one of the things we've, we've seen very clearly, if you have a two-day week, that's optional. So like, we try to have at least three days in a week because if you, if you only have two days in a week, your attendance just plummets. So there's little things that you, that you pick up, you know?
Have we changed a lot of our internal mechanisms since COVID or before COVID?
As far as tracking?
Yeah, to track attendance.
I don't know that we've changed anything significantly.
No. We, we did try to make it easier for parents to report absences, those types of things, but not as far as, as tracking it. It's still the same requirement through the state.
When you're looking at ADA, is it looking at unexcused the same as excused?
So that's one of the things, the state doesn't really care. You're here, you're not here, they don't necessarily care why. The only reason why an excuse really plays in is when we start getting into truancy.
And didn't it, one time they need to have like doctor's notes and stuff like that, but now a parent just says that their kid was sick?
So, so those are the things we're looking into, right? So we've got, you know, old practices that, because it used to be a thing, as we call it. And then, so this school requires that. A call-in from a parent at this school is different. So we're just, those are the things, why we're taking a little time to really research what we're doing across all of our giant campuses, especially if we are adding more split campuses, right? This elementary school now goes to two intermediates, but we need that, we want that to be consistent. So we're looking at, at those things, see if we're, we're hindering ourselves as far as, is it too easy to be absent? Is it too hard to be absent? You know, we want to find that middle ground. So those are the things we're researching right now. But the state doesn't care. You're here, you're not here.
The, the conversation of excused versus unexcused is a constant conversation that really is not a conversation because the state doesn't care. There is no, I guess technically, there is no excuse or unexcuse. You're not there, you're absent, period. An absence is an absence. But, but in the parents' world, it's, we get hung on that pretty tightly, but the bottom line is.
So even if they had a doctor's note, like, it wouldn't matter in the state side?
If you're not present, you're not present, right?
It matters, it only matters for the purposes of our.
Not being, and not being truant and.
Not being truant, the courts, the courts care.
And also being able, eligible to do an activity or whatever. Like you were saying, UIL reasons.
I'd love to hear, you know, what you guys find out and if we could, you know, have a percentage goal and what you think would be a realistic increase, that would be great to see. And if there's incentives or ways to, you know, get the kid, they could, you know, I don't know, have competitions between classrooms or something.
Weren't we doing pep rallies before?
Before, we've always been very, like, compared to period, pre-COVID, compared to period districts, we were always the highest in our attendance. And we were, we had pep, we had all types of incentives like Dr. Medford mentioned. Immediately post-COVID, those didn't feel right. You know, it's time to.
They've, they've started bringing those back at the campuses. We're, we're more looking at it as the district, but we'd, we'd be glad to keep you updated. They're, they're a hard-working group, they'll be proud to share.
All right, so this is our two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six preliminary budget as of October twenty twenty-four. Our total revenue estimate, this is very early on, seven hundred and eleven point three million dollars and total expenditures of seven hundred and twenty-six point two million dollars, putting us with an estimated budget shortfall of fourteen point nine six. Like I said, this was as of October. We have since then had some developments related to our over-sixty-five hold harmless calculation as a result of Senate Bill Twelve. I'm going to invite our special guest to come up this evening so we can start to facilitate the conversation regarding this. So we have Tammy McCray, our Tax Assessor Collector from Montgomery County is here this evening. And then Robbie Harbuck with Linebarger, the Property Study Appeals Division Director with Linebarger. And then Sherri Hunter, the Interim Chief Appraiser for Montgomery County is here as well.
Thank you all for coming this evening and for bringing us these updates.
So I'm going to just go through a few things kind of leading into the conversation. So Senate Bill Twelve, a little bit of background. This was passed during the eighty-seventh legislative session during the second special session. It became effective with tax year twenty twenty-three. It provided tax relief to our over-sixty-five residents to give them the benefit of all of the compression that has happened since House Bill Three was passed. It did require a recalculation of the freeze ceiling for all of those over-sixty-five residents. Districts were to be held harmless for any loss of local property tax revenue, which means the state would make us whole for any loss in revenue as a result of that recalculation. And with that came a new data reporting requirement from the taxing jurisdictions that would ultimately be used by the Texas Education Agency to calculate this hold harmless. So just to kind of give you an idea of how the data flows, every year, the Montgomery Central Appraisal District certifies our property values in July. That data is then sent to the Montgomery County Tax Office and then directly to the State Comptroller's Property Tax Division. The Tax Office prepares this new form fifty-two, fifty-three along with other required information that is also sent to the Property Tax Division. The Property Tax Division then certifies that information. It's sent to the Texas Education Agency. The Texas Education Agency then loads those data elements for those property value information into our summary of finances, and that is what determines the funding that we receive as a district. We have a three-year window in which we can go through what's called an audit process to correct any data that's been sent to the Property Tax Division, whether it's a correction of an error of information or if our property values have changed in a way that is beneficial to the district in terms of more funding. So we have a three-year window to, to go through with the audit process. So a little bit more information about that Form fifty-two, fifty-three. When it initially came out in twenty twenty-three, the first year that the, the reporting requirement was made, there was a lot of confusion from the State Comptroller's Office in terms of the instructions. The statute was not clear in terms of what should be reported by taxing jurisdictions. We suspected that there was a, a problem with the data in twenty twenty-three, and we worked with Tammy McCray and her office last year, and they reached out to the comptroller and given the direction at the time, the information was consistent with what was provided to taxing jurisdictions in terms of what was to be included. When we received our twenty twenty-four data, it became more apparent to us that something wasn't right because, like I said, we were to be made whole for the money that we were losing as a result of that calculation and things were just not aligning. So Tammy once again reached out to the State Comptroller's Office. They provided additional clarification and realized that they needed to, to issue a new form with some updated instructions. So as a result, Tammy prepared a corrected fifty-two, fifty-three for both tax year twenty-three and tax year twenty-four that was reported to the State Property Tax Division. What does this mean for us? This means additional hold harmless revenue that's due to the district for tax year twenty-three, for tax year twenty-four and beyond. So we are working through, Linebarger has already started the audit process for us, gathering information to start that process for tax year twenty-three. And I'm going to let Tammy McCray kind of just go through the timeline of how, how these events unfolded.
Thank you. It's welcome and appreciate you having. Can you hear me? Okay. Well, thank you for having us this evening. And I just want to, I want to back up to last year, twenty twenty-three. And, and I want to commend Karen Garza. You, I don't think you realize what a jewel you have here because she reached out, she knows her data better than, than most. And she reached out and said, I think there's a, there's an error on this calculation. And we went through the calculation, and according to the calculation, it was correct. So I did reach out to the comptroller as she stated, and we moved on. We get to twenty-four, it was in October that we sent the reports to her, and she said, I, I do believe this is incorrect. I reached out to a software vendor and asked them, you know, is there, is there any further instruction? No. And so we continued to look at the data and dive further into just Conroe ISD. At that time, we determined, we agreed with Karen, there seems to be an error. So reached back out to my software vendor and they said that they were going to do some programming. I reported that to all of our school districts, not just Conroe, to let them know that there, there appeared to be a programming issue and we were going to get that completed and issue new reports. In the meantime, my software vendor reached out, as I did, to the comptroller again. And it was because of Karen's persistence that this really opened up. The comptroller went back and agreed that the funding calculation was incorrect. And it was not a programming error, it was their interpretation of the law. And so we were able to issue new reports to them. But in addition to that, the entire state, this is an issue for the entire state of Texas. And it's because of Karen and her persistence with this that it opened up in the comptroller. And the comptroller went back and looked and clarified, yes, she is right. We did not recapture, all we captured was the prior year. And so now we've gone back and we've recaptured all of the years. And so you will see an increase, or I predict you'll see an increase in funding.
Are you saying every IS, this has affected every ISD in the state of Texas?
It did.
So are they all going to be getting a refund or revenue back in? Are we going to be seeing that across each?
That would be the expectation, yes, okay.
It just depends on that particular school district.
It does depend on the district based on two, how many over-sixty-five homesteads they would have. There's a lot of areas that are retirement communities in, in school districts, but there are a lot of areas that don't have very many retired people that the freeze loss didn't affect as much. So it's going to be different for every school district.
Have we received our calculation amount yet?
We're, we're in the process right now, as, as she stated. To give you all kind of an idea, okay, the state did receive your information from the certified twenty-three values a year ago. In the fall and winter, they do their property value study. January thirty-first, those values are certified to TEA as preliminary values. And actually, this year, your values were certified as invalid. So we came in and we filed an appeal and fought against the state to reduce their value to the local value, which did result, we reduced, we reduced the values by three point four billion dollars, which at that time got twenty-five point nine million dollars back in, in aid that y'all would have lost because of that. And working through those appeals, January thirty-first, the study's released. We have forty days to gather all the information, write the appeals, file them. So by March twelfth, we filed the appeal. And then from that point, we worked on our appeals through July this year. They certify the final value. Now, we're talking about twenty-three was certified final in twenty-four to TEA. And then they started the settle-up process. First part of September, they pulled that new final value into the summaries of finance. They started to settle up, TEA did, toward the end of September, first of October. So ledger payments have been made. Like I said, twenty-five point nine million dollars so far. That started August fifteenth, the timeline, to file up to three audits for the district over a three-year period. So the last audit cycle to close out was twenty. That was another thing we did this year. The end of last year, we filed a twenty audit, corrected some role adjustments for y'all, and that resulted in seventy-one point four million dollar value reduction. And this spring and summer, those payments were made out to the ledgers. That resulted in an extra seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to the district. And so the next cycle closeout's twenty-one. We've been reviewing that to see if it's going to be a benefit. But in the meantime, we've all, this has been pulled into the mix. And, and this all started. One reason is, is the homestead changed after values were certified.
So are you saying these audits are done annually for, for back to three years? Is this something that's been done consistently?
Yes, every, you're getting a role review twice a year. You're going to get a property value. This year, you were invalid. We moved it back to valid. So typically, what a district that's valid is going to receive a property value study one year and Methods and Assistance Program review the next year. So y'all are an odd-year property value study and even-year MAP review. So for twenty-four, you're getting a MAP review. You're not getting a property value study. You will have values certified to TEA for funding, but they will be certified as local values. Now, we still go in at that time and review for a self-report appeal because from July, when they were certified to y'all, from the time that state takes them and certifies them preliminary to TEA, ARBs are running later than ever now throughout the year. You can have late-file exemptions. Anything that causes you the ability to collect locally loses wealth locally. TEA never knows that. And the only way they do know it is if we file that self-report appeal.
And Linebarger does that for us annually, so twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen?
We review your most current role when it's released every year for an appeal. And then the next cycle that's closing out in the fall, we review that every year before it closes out that next summer to get any funding that, so you don't have any left on the table.
Right.
We're, we're, you know, going to get every, now, in this instance, because we can file up to three audits, we are reviewing, I don't believe you'll have an audit for twenty-three. One of the things that we were able to get put in place with the state this year during our appeals process is they're also adding another feature to where we can go in and have a freeze loss correction made by filing. They put in a Form fifty-four hundred. It's a freeze loss correction request. So we can take that form along with a freeze loss recap and then their new fifty-two, fifty-three form with the freeze loss information on it. We can file that. And that, typically what we're doing is dealing with value. And what we're looking at, if we're looking at something in your role and you have a supplement that's going to increase your role, if we increase your value, you owe more money to TEA. They're not going to give you more money. So we're not going to file that. So what we're looking at right now, and we ought to know by the end of the week, if an. if an audit is not going to benefit you financially, we won't file that. We will just file on the freeze loss correction.
Which is the 5400.
But we want to make sure that we're getting y'all the best benefit out of all of it. They're not going to charge an audit for us to file that correction on the freeze loss correction since it's not a complete audit process. But we're wanting to make sure we've had, and I've still got more questions for them. With the audit process, if something's filed, the roles have fingers all in them. And if something pops out that ends up hurting the district, when I file an audit and it looks like it's going to benefit a district, if something pops out that ends up hurting them, the state has, the state has to report to me what the findings are. So if it's going to be an adverse effect, I can withdraw. TEA's not submitted any changes. I talked to the director of property tax assistance division today and her supervisor over data analysis. They're going to have a form put in place the same way they have that audit waiver. If something happens in this process to where something adverse comes out of it, because it's going to be a brand-new process. No one knows until they start processing then what's coming out of them. But they will have the same, similar withdrawal process if something happens. We'll withdraw it rather than adversely affecting the district.
Mr. Har, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Just so I'm, I'm understanding what you're saying here. Is this, was this a software issue that, that happened across the state?
It was a.
Caught an error of some sort?
It was a calculation issue. Back when we were filing the appeals to gather all of our information at the first part of the year, we couldn't even get the calculations from the state.
But a person's not calculating it, it's going through some sort of software or something?
No, I mean, actually before this was all built into programs, a person does have to calculate.
Really? So the law was misinterpreted by humans is what, is how I understood it?
The law was misinterpreted by the comptroller's office. They have gone back in the beginning in 2023. They said, we go back to the prior year, which was 2022, and you recapture, you'll capture that lost revenue. In reality, you really lost because it was, we had the compression, a five-year compression that we had to perform in addition to adding the $100,000 exemption, which was a $60,000 difference in the homestead. And so all of that compounded, you should have seen that what we thought was going to happen was that you would get the recapture of all of that compression, which is due to those over 65 and disabled homesteads. And you did not. It only took into account one year, which was tax year 2022, which is what Karen kept questioning. And because we went back to them again this year and, and kept, we didn't let up. We just said, no, we, this cannot be right. They have not been made whole. And I did ask the question of the comptroller. I also spoke to the director yesterday as well at the property tax assistance division. And I asked her, I said, I cannot believe of all the school districts that Conroe was the one to kind of break this all open. And they said, well, it's because you have a great CFO that knows the ins and outs.
You can't believe it, come on.
Well, it's not that I can't, I do believe it. But I can't believe that someone else didn't notice that their funding wasn't there. And the way she explained it to me, and Robbie knows this as well as Karen, is if you go back to Karen's chart that she had a few minutes ago, you're getting values, I'm getting values, and we're sending all of this information in. I only see a piece of that. Robbie sees at the very end, and I am, the tax role is changing every single day. I, I get a supplement at least once a month, but right now we're getting them every two weeks. And so that tax role changes. That's why Robbie's group doesn't audit because that tax role changes. Outside of what this, the compression and the increased homestead exemption, outside of that, you still have changes. And so they are looking to see if it's something that the district could gain state funding from by doing this, these audits. But it was just the perfect storm. Last year in 2023, the comptroller could not even explain to us the proper way to calculate, which is what Robbie was saying. And so we all kind of had to interpret that law and go with what they recommended at the time, which was prior year, and we recapture that. And so this year, after, they really got on the ball because after Karen was so persistent and they started digging into it, they've come out with a new Form 250-253 to, so that we can report that additional.
Called the Karen Garza Form?
Yeah, it's called the Karen Garza Form, yes. That's a great name for it.
Should be.
So, so just, just very simply, there was an error in the comptroller's office and we're receiving funding. Guaranteed funding.
What's the timeline of when we should know what that number is? And what's a conservative thought today of what that number could be?
So I can share some information about what we expect the number to be. We probably will not have a definitive answer on what the final number is until spring. But conservatively, we have had two external groups look at the calculation, one including Linebarger. They've got a person in their office that is an expert in the state funding calculation process. And then we've had Tasbo look at it too, one of their state funding experts. And we are anticipating conservatively about a $10 million gain for tax year 23 and then 7.5 million going on for tax year 24 and then beyond that. So just, what does that mean for us? You know, one of the things that we looked at earlier was our fund balance analysis. So if we look at what this could potentially mean for us at the end of fiscal year 24, 25, that target, based on our current budget. Now, we know our budget's going to change going into next year, but just for illustrative purposes, based on our current budget, we would be looking at a, I don't know why the font's messed up there, but this would put us at a capacity at the end of this fiscal year in our fund balance of $19.7 million. We were initially, prior to this correction being made, looking at going into 25, 26 with a $2.2 million capacity in our fund balance. So this puts us in a, puts us in a much better place moving into 25, 26 in terms of what's in our savings account. Now, are we ready to write a check yet? No, we're going to wait and kind of, and kind of hold still until we know exactly what the results of the study are going to be. And like Robbie mentioned, there's, there's over 100 districts that already have a tax year 23 appeal or an audit in process because of this error. So we're going to kind of let some of these smaller district ones maybe make their way through the process because it is new so that they can work out all of the kinks. And then we may wait a little bit and submit ours, but we should know something spring. I mean, is that a fair statement, Robbie?
I would, yeah, I would think so. I'm actually, when I leave here, I'm going back to College Station. I'm, I'm attending the annual property tax institute that the state puts on every year right now. We, we came in yesterday there to College Station and we attended today and will attend tomorrow. I will see the director again and her supervisor. One thing I didn't think about until we were all talking a while ago is the next audit cycle to close out's 21. We've already filed 137 21 audits. They've got a log of over 123. And I don't know whether they're full audits or if they're these corrections just for the freeze loss. That can make a difference in the time taken to do that. But I also need to find out, okay, are y'all going to process the 21 first? Or y'all going to jump the 23? Since there, there might be a shorter process going there ahead. So that's something that I'll, I should know tomorrow. But like right now, if I, like my 21 audits I just filed, they haven't processed them. The past couple of years, if you follow the timelines that they've done, they'll finalize them in January, February. They'll certify those changes to TEA after we sign off on them. TEA will pay out on the general ledger portion, March or April. If there's any instructional facilities or existing debt allotments, they won't pay out on those typically till June or July. So there's a split in the funding, but the bulk of it is going to be your foundation payment from tier one and tier two that would come March, April. So if, if they jump to 23 ahead, then you may have the funds, the bulk of the funds by spring. But if, if they stay in the queue where they're at, they're going to already have more audits this year than they typically would. So it could fall off to where the 23 may not be even processed till spring and they may not be funded till summer.
But even if they're processed and the cash is not here yet? I mean, we, we could move forward at that point, once we know. I mean, we know funding is coming.
And pull from the fund balance?
It's just that will add to fund balance, correct?
So we should definitely know at least by spring.
We should know. We should know well in advance of when we need to adopt the budget, so.
We'll have it before fiscal year though.
Correct.
And we can pull from the fund balance until it comes in safely, he's going to say?
Correct, yes. There'll be a settle-up process if it happens after fiscal year. But it'll be recorded in revenue accordingly in the current fiscal year. So taking all of that into consideration, this is a preliminary look at our 25, 26 budget. With that in mind, I have added a $7.5 million conservative revenue line item in here on the budget. And going through the process with Dr. Medford and her team, when we were initially thinking we were going to have to make a $15 million adjustment, we did identify some things on the expenditure side of our budget that we could remove that would have little to no impact to our campuses. And you can see them outlined there on the expenditure line items. So this puts us right now, currently, like I said, we're still eight and a half months out from budget adoption with a deficit of $3.8 million. Now, I do anticipate this improving as the year goes on because as we enroll students in the current year and add them to our special programs, that increases our funding for the current year, which is used as our baseline for next year. So I am confident that we can get this budget balanced, even with no additional state funding. So my recommendation for now would be that we kind of hold steady, that come spring, we staff like we normally would and then make any adjustments based on what comes out of the legislative session in terms of a raise or if additional funding does come that allows us to staff at a different level than we would have planned on.
So you're saying even with the knowledge of this money that's coming back for the 24, 25 budget? Because this is 25, 26.
Right. So what I'm putting in here is a recurring revenue item of $7.5 million. We know we're going to get potentially $17.5 million for the back pay for tax year 23 and for tax year 24, what we're owed. So this is revenue that's going to be recurring. So that, that's why you'll see the revenue number has increased here. And then with those small adjustments on the expenditure side, we can get very close to a balanced budget. And like I said, we're, we're very early on, we're still looking at some things. So I'm confident we can get this thing balanced.
So this $3.8 million budget shortfall that you're projecting preliminarily wise for 25, 26, it is reflecting the, the potential $7.5 million?
It is, it is.
And the adjustment for the things that you're seeing removed? So we're still in the deficit?
Yes. But if you'll recall last spring, when we brought the 24, 25 budget to you initially, I believe it was in February, we were looking at a $17 million deficit. And as the year went on, we brought you back a 12, 12 million. So I, I think we'll make up some ground as the year continues, as we continue to enroll students. And so 3.8 million is, is.
But this is without a raise?
This is without a raise. That's why I said, depending on what comes out of the legislative session, we'll make adjustments to that in terms of a raise if additional funding does come.
There's a slide on that coming up, right?
Yes.
I just want to make sure so I don't ask a question now.
Sure. So just, just a brief overview, the 89th legislative session begins on January 14th. It's 140 days in length. The last day to file bills is March 14th. The governor, the constitution prohibits any action on a bill prior to this date unless it's on the governor's emergency declaration. I don't anticipate that we're going to know anything about school finance funding probably until May, which has been very typical of the past legislative sessions. It's typically the middle to the end of May before a school finance bill is passed. And then June 2nd is the last day of the regular session. Just kind of wanted to bring to light some of the options that we have available going into 25, 26. We've talked about these prior disaster pennies. We have the ability to access, according to the tax code, what's called disaster pennies for one year only. Hurricane Barrel does qualify as a natural disaster that was declared in our area. That would require board approval in August. If we chose to elect to take a disaster penny, we could take a half a penny, one penny, whatever, whatever the board chose to do, if that's a route you wanted to go. And then of course, a Vator would have to go to the voters in November of '25. And then we'll work towards reducing the budget to get it balanced is another option.
The Vator's separate from the disaster pennies?
It is.
And the disaster pennies don't affect the tax?
They will.
But it's one time?
But it's board approved, not voter?
It's for one year only and it's board approval.
And we have two available, was that right?
There's, it's up to you. There, there's not a limit on it, I wouldn't recommend doing more than two.
There's no max?
I mean, yeah.
Okay, that's, okay.
Yeah.
But the key thing on that is, is those funds can only be used in, to replenish funds that we used in our MNO for disaster expenses?
Yes, that, that's the purpose of the tax code.
Right, no, I'm just reiterating that for, for everyone else.
What's our total? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, that was one of my, I think you were headed there. Go ahead and ask that question.
What's our total for Hurricane?
We're about $2.5 million.
We had several storms that this, I guess that would be this year. Does it just count for Barrel or all the storms?
Barrel would be the, the event that would constitute us being able to adopt a disaster penny.
Is it by event or like storms per year?
It's by event.
Okay.
Yes.
And?
Sorry, what was our total?
Around $2.5 million.
Thank you. And that would increase the tax rate?
It would increase it for one year only, yes. Well, and taking into consideration compression, you know, it would, I guess essentially lower the amount of the decrease, if, if that makes sense. So instead of it being a three-cent decrease, it might be a two-cent decrease if you were to elect a disaster penny.
My, my biggest concern for the taxpayer to hear because this doesn't come to them. This would be a board decision. And that's, to me, that's a, that's a big deal for us to make a decision on that. The main thing that I would want them to hear is that A, that it is only to help with the disaster expenditures because we have not had a funding ADA increase since 2019. And we all know the, I thought I saw shaking heads. We all know the increase of our inflation has been much greater since 2019. And we are still operating with funds based on 2019. That's, yeah, so that's number one. Number two are, but that doesn't really affect the disaster money, but it does affect in the sense that we're paying for these repairs. We're funding based on that 2019 money that, on today's dollars that we're getting. The, the second thing on that is that there were a lot of security measures put in place, i.e. fencing around every single campus, elementary, middle school, not high schools, I don't think per se, but intermediates and middle schools and so forth. My, that what we experienced there was funding to put those fences up, but no allotment money came with the maintaining of those. So now we have all these increased expenses that we've incurred on funding for these safety measures, which we're all in favor of. But maintaining them and fixing them in these, in Barrel's storm has now cost us dramatically. And that is not covered by our deductibles. Because it's, every campus has a deductible for every storm and we don't generally meet the deductible for that because it has to be so high in order for us to be insured. So these are a lot of things that I just wanted to put out there publicly for a taxpayer to hear that if we were to ever consider that, these are the reasons why we are even.
Right. And what it essentially would allow us to do is put some money back in the savings account that we had to use to, to do these repairs out of the general fund as a result of the storm.
Thank you.
So just some talking points as we move into the 89th legislative session, just so you have some context as you're beginning to hear things being talked about. A $100 increase in the basic allotment would generate roughly $9 million for the district. If the basic allotment were adjusted for inflation, that would be at $7,500. This increase would generate roughly $120 million in additional funding for the district if it went all the way to $7,500. One golden penny is worth $12 million for us. And then as we discussed, every 1% increase in ADA is $5 million. And then our current budget deficit of 11.9 is less than 2% of our operating budget. So estimated raise scenarios, these are very preliminary estimates just based on the raise that we provided in November of 2023. And I just put some different scenarios up here so you have some idea of the different percentages and what the cost would be to the district.
Ms. Garza, I have a question on the teachers and librarians. Are librarians not automatically included in that category?
They are on the teacher pay schedule. Librarians are, yes.
I was confused by that heading.
Yeah.
It used to be, so you have the teacher pay scale, then you have all the other pay scales. It used to be teachers, nurses and librarians were all just the same, same pay scale. We moved nurses off of that pay scale a few years ago to compete with the market for nurses.
But not recently?
But, yeah, so. But, yeah, so now, so now it's just teachers and librarians, and that's a common format.
It's been that way a few years.
Yeah, oh, yes. And it's, that's a common, everywhere you look, you'll kind of see it that way, school districts.
So this is raise scenarios, and this is retention stipend scenarios. If we were going to look at doing a retention stipend, the cost associated with each of those amounts.
Okay. So on, could you go back to the pay raise one? So if we were to, in a dream world, because right now it's all monopoly money, there's no real money there to do this with. If we were to even consider any type of raise, we'd be looking at the total cost column.
Yes.
Because when typically as a district, I mean, of course, as a board, we can make whatever decisions we want, but I'm just saying typically in the past, that doesn't mean we always do that, but typically in the past, we've accounted for all employees on a raise increase with, and so we need to be looking at that total cost. So a 3%, could you go to the next slide real quickly? Okay, go back, sorry. A 3% increase is 18.6. Going over to the stipend, it's 15. So it is $3 million difference. But, go back to the other slide. This one affects a teacher's or administrators or employees TRS retirement fund. So I just state that as a conversation and discussion point tonight for the trustees as well as the public, although we are locked into it then because you don't usually do a back roll on payroll.
And that's one of the things that's nice about a retention stipend. It's a one time.
Yes, a stipend, we can do a one time, but it doesn't help their end game. But we are committing, if we do a raise, that we don't generally do a pay cut. We, that is a set amount going forward. So just some things to talk about. We do have, I mean, I don't mean to be condescending or anything, but we have new members, so I just wanted to point that out.
All right, that's all I have for you this evening. Unless there's any further questions, I want to thank our guests for being here this evening and talking us through.
Thank you guys so much for this super hard work. Yes, please come back with some other good news.
Anytime you have good news.
Yeah, that's really great news, so thank you, guys.
Thank you all so much. And safe travels back to College State.
Yes. I kept waiting for you to say A&amp;M so we could whoop, but you didn't, so. He was very smart about that. It's a little before eight. Do you all want to take a break real quickly, or do you want to plow on? Okay, so we'll take, can we try to make it back here by 8:05? Is that too fast? Okay, thank you. We are adjourned. Back on time. Okay, the next item up on our workshop for discussion tonight is Item B. Discuss bus transportation challenges regarding rezoning. I believe Mr. McCord, you have something to share with us.
I do, and President Odenweller, members of the board, and Dr. Noel, thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. And I'm here to talk to you regarding rezoning and transportation. And to really be able to do that, I need to really talk about transportation in general first. And one thing that's kind of unique and interesting about transportation, if you think about it, what else in life do you have that's a really difficult to make work, complex system that's very intricate with a lot of moving parts, that over the course of a year, you get really, really good at it? And then, say a day in May comes around, maybe around Memorial Day, and you say, oh, let's just dissolve it and start all over. And so that's really what we do with transportation, and then we rebuild it like a phoenix as we start school. And so what happens is, when you have it happen, you have, you rebuild the routes, the bus stop, walk-to-stop distances that are board-approved for students change as they get older. The bus numbers may change. We need to re-inform and train pre-kindergarten and kindergarten parents that they need to drop off and pick up their children. And all those things really impact school as we start up school and transportation. And then, one thing I've learned in life in 58 years is that, for whatever reason, the first week or two of school, there is a propensity of people to pick up and drop off their children at school. So you've probably, if you've been a part of that, you've been part of the congestion that surrounds school. And then our buses have to matriculate through that congestion, just like people in a car, except we're doing it in a 70-something passenger bus. So it's really a challenge. Our people work hard to make it happen, and then ultimately, water finds its level. And then here we are, and we're at a day in early December, and it's working swimmingly. So what happens when you have a rezone, you know, an existing school, the overwhelming majority of the kids and the parents that are at a school, at a school at the beginning of a school year, went there the previous year. So they know the systems, and they know how the traffic works, and you're well on your way. When you have a rezone, everybody who's going to that school, for example, Bartlett this last fall, that's the first time. So everybody is new to the school, learning new systems. So for a rezoning system, it's a, it's a challenge, but it's really, there's some good things that come out of it, and I want to talk about those today. And one thing that people may not realize, is you increase the number of schools within your school district, you have a higher percentage of schools that are close to where kids and families live, eat, sleep, and play. So what happens is, is that more and more people are close to a school where they can walk, they can ride a bike, or they can take a Marty McFly hoverboard, whatever they want to do to get there, and they can get to school. And so it's, they're more proximal to the building, which I think is special. But one thing that results from that also is that you'll see there will be a slight decrease in the number of buses that are required to equip a campus as more and more campuses are closer and closer to the children and families they serve. So our team put together this slide that you look at here, and this just gives you an overall estimate of what the bus numbers will look like per campus as part of rezoning and transportation in the fall of 2025, August of 2025. When you add them all together, what we will do is we'll end up, in all likelihood, depending upon which boundary zones for Campbell and Isler are approved by the Board of Trustees, with a net fewer of four buses that have to make runs to serve the school. And at first, that doesn't sound like that big a thing, but when you start doing the math to it, you have four buses that run over 172 days, and they have six runs, three in the morning and three afternoon. So although I'm not a math wizard, it comes to somewhere in the neighborhood of 4,128 runs that are eliminated by the addition of Isler and Campbell Elementary Schools. So that is a good thing, and so if you look here, this is kind of what we're looking at as far as the impact of transportation. I want to go back here, and I want to talk about something that I alluded to. I tried to be thorough two weeks ago when we had our attendance boundary meeting. Now, because every kid is important, every family is important, and I wanted to really cover every potentiality that might result as part of rezoning. But I want to talk about a specific situation that some of you may know, and that is in the year 2022, we had an emergency rezone that impacted Bush Elementary and Mitchell Intermediate. And it really was necessitated because Bush Elementary is extremely landlocked, like many of the elementary schools in the Woodlands High School theater, and we were out of room. And so we did an emergency rezoning, so students that lived in the west side of Foster's Ridge, up O'Conroe Road, that attended Bush Elementary or Mitchell Intermediate were rezoned to Derichin, Derichin K-6 school, Flex School. And you say, well, why Derichin? The reason was, there's really two-fold reasons. Number one, Derichin had capacity in the building, and number two, Derichin had something that is incredibly valuable in the Woodlands for schools, and that is land space for portable buildings. So Tina Oliver and her team did a great job welcoming them, and so it's worked out really good. And so what was unique about this, and the reason I bring this up, because it has applicability to a situation we could face in fall of 2025, in that the incoming fifth graders and sixth graders of that year 2022, 2023, that otherwise would have gone to Mitchell, were rezoned to Derichin. And Derichin's great. But what was unique about this situation, for the first time in 133 years, well, I guess at that time, it'd been 132, 131 years of our history, we did is that we allowed those students that were part of the cohorts that were at Mitchell to transfer the last two years to complete their time at Mitchell versus joining Derichin if they wanted to because basically, kids at Derichin could have been there for up to six years. So they would have been joining a movie late in the progress of the movie. I mean, the credits weren't rolling, but it was close to the end. But the agreement was, is that we would provide transportation for one year and one year only. Thirty students elected to take that transportation and transfer and stay at Mitchell. If they stayed the second year, for example, if they were a fifth grader in '22, '23, presumably a sixth grader in '23, '24, they had to provide transportation for the second year, and they did so. So you had 150 students that transferred, 30 students elected to receive transportation for that one year. It worked out, it worked out fine. So that was a one-year deal. So moving forward, I want to talk about how it applies to what we talked about two, a couple of weeks ago. And that is, we have a number of scenarios that we're looking at as far as rezoning. And ultimately, it will be your choice. It'll happen at the third Tuesday night in January, whatever that is. But the situation applies to two little areas that are close to Kirkendall and Woodlands Parkway. That is Bonnie Branch and Lennox Hill, depending upon what you choose to do. Bonnie Branch and Lennox Hill feed into Galatas at the elementary level, and they feed into Mitchell Intermediate at the intermediate level. Bonnie Branch is just north of Woodlands Parkway, Lennox Hill is just south. So what would be impacted would be about 20 students that are, would be fourth and fifth graders of the year 2024, 2025 school year. So 20 students would be combined from those two grades, they would be going into fifth and sixth grade at Mitchell Intermediate for the year 2024, 2025. Totally depending upon what you want to do, if we continued that trend that we'd started in 2022, we would allow those students to have transportation for one year. Now, if you take those 20 students, so say half of them go ahead and go to Colson Tough, which is where they're zoned to. So that leaves you approximately 10 students that would be impacted. Of those 10, if you apply the ratio of people in the Woodlands that ride transportation, six of those 10 would be impacted and could potentially request transportation for the 2025, 2026 school year.
So can I stop just for, is it okay if I ask questions as we go throughout? So that would mean that, say, if 10 took you up on transportation, we're providing a bus route for 10 kids to continue going on to Mitchell from Galatas?
They would be picked up and they would be transported to Mitchell?
And how many seats are on each bus?
About 76, 77, or 78.
So you've got 65 empty seats?
No, they would be picked up as part of another bus.
As part of another route?
Yeah, they would have to go through that area.
Okay.
And so an important takeaway from it also is that those kids in Lennox Hill or Bonnie Branch, they're being transported by CST Transportation anyway because they qualify. They're over the one-mile distance. So I took the time, Dr. Merle and I, we used the interweb, and we gave you some distances and some times for transport as of 8:43 a.m. and 8:44 a.m. this morning because we thought that was important. So that is really, we're talking about challenges. There are some challenges with rezoning, but there's a lot of opportunities and great things that come about with rezoning for transportation also. And so, in all honesty, that's what I have tonight. I hope this makes sense. What we do for rezoning and what we do for transportation is totally up to you, and we're here to serve and will follow your lead and your wish. And I hope this was all be somewhat short. I hope it's helpful, and myself, Mr. Melendez or Dr. Merle, will do our best to answer any questions you might have.
So just looking at this, this is, there's not much change really between the two options. We're talking 12 to seven minutes and eight to six. Am I seeing that correctly?
You're seeing exactly, exactly correctly. It's very negligible. Yes, ma'am.
So none of the, so we're only talking about rezoning. These kids at Colson Tough, this has nothing to do with Isler, nothing to do with the Derichin rezon, any of that?
Now, this would just apply to these kids that live in this particular area because they would be rezoned to a K-6 campus. It's a different and unique situation. We did it in 2022, 2023. If you desire for us to do it again, to provide for those students, we can. We by no means have to. It's just something that's on the table.
And the kids that are going, that would be zoned to Isler, they're currently going to Mitchell, right? But they're going to a brand-new K-36 campus, so that's why they're not being offered the transportation?
If they are going to Isler, and Isler was presumably K-6, it would not apply to them because they would not be joining another group that was already in progress at an existing campus. They will be creating a new campus, a new culture from themselves so that, and now, it's important to note too, so if you look at it, for example, and not about zoning, but Isler Elementary, Rivers Edge is across the street. Rivers Edge would not receive transportation. It's well within the one mile. Foster's Ridge, I mentioned this two weeks ago, people think that it is just right by Rivers Edge, and it's not. It's a mile down the road. So looking at it, Foster's Ridge students, east or west, whomever goes to Isler would receive transportation. So it would be mainly Rivers Edge, Isler, that would not receive transportation. And then there's a few homes that are in the area that don't fall, that've been there for quite a while, within Rivers Edge or Foster's Ridge. If they live within one mile, they would not receive transportation. If they're outside that mile, they would. I hope that helps.
I remember that Colson Tough had space from our last presentation.
They do.
What's the space look like at Mitchell?
Mitchell is at 109, 110% of capacity right now. The issue at Mitchell, if we do not get relief to Mitchell, we have really, our options are limited. And I talked about, Mitchell didn't grow for a long time. It was really static. It was a great school, but it just didn't grow. It's growing coming from Rivers Edge and coming from O'Conroe Road. To put portables at Mitchell, you really have two options. One, which will not be well-received, that will be put them on the basketball court. Number two, you could put them on the other side of the basketball court, but it starts to become quite a hike for intermediate students. So that's what we face at Mitchell, and Mitchell's going to continue to grow. And Isler's going to open, and Isler, regardless of what we do, is going to continue to grow quickly, as will Campbell Elementary, as will Bartlett. So growth is coming, and so-
Which will feed into these two schools?
What's that now?
Which, those schools, those elementaries or K-36 schools that you were just mentioning are going to feed into Mitchell and Colson Tough?
Well, Isler would feed in, if it's K-6, it would feed into McCullough.
McCullough.
Yeah.
That's what, I'm sorry, M.M., my bad. McCullough, yes.
And then, and then ultimately, like a great movie, at seventh grade at McCullough, they all come together. And so they'll all be Highlanders, McCullough, and the Woodlands High School. I hope that helps.
Thank you for taking the time to do this. I did have some questions after the last meeting, if it was adding routes. I appreciate you explaining it further.
It's like I said last time too, everything is something, nothing is everything. It's a few kids. It's a few kids, and it's totally your option. It would be for one year.
And if it's all on the same route, I think that's different than adding an extra route.
Yes.
Or having a bus running around with 10 kids on it, or where six, I mean.
You know, this isn't why we're here, but it's also important to note, and people may not know this, but at least where I grew up, when I grew up, buses just drove up and down the roads until they saw a kid. No, they didn't. And they picked them up. No, they didn't. But we have routers, we have routers that work hard, and we only drive to areas where we have a designated student who's enrolled to ride the bus. We just don't drive around and look for kids.
Then it's not legal. We don't do that here, just so I know. We don't encourage that.
Yeah, we just go to where the kids are enrolled to be.
And if I'm not mistaken, Mr. McCord, a year and a half ago, a year ago, we had, I mean, we updated, maybe it was our lanyards, our badges that we wore, that created new routing systems to be the most effective, most efficient. So I assure our parents in the district, we are not just running up and down streets picking up kids.
No, and one corollary of that comment is that we have over 10,000 parents right now that have signed up for the SmartTag app. They get notifications for the arrival of their child.
Love it. I love it.
So, hey, good deal. We aim to please. And if anyone out there is listening on the internet or watching on the internet, if you go to our transportation website, it really has extensive information on how to sign up to get that, and it really would be worth your time.
It's step-by-step.
Thank you. Yes. Oh, so behind me, we have our Executive Director of Operations, Mark Merle, who oversees transportation. And then we have Juan Melendez from Crane, Texas, behind me in the nice sport coat and khakis, which we all decided to wear tonight, although we didn't call each other. And so Juan Melendez, Robin Hancock was here. She is our manager of routing, and she's really the Wizard of Oz behind the scenes that makes it all work. I believe she had to leave to pick up her child. She is, she's wonderful. It would not happen with such regularity and accuracy without Robin Hancock's assistance, so.
Thank you all.
Okay, Trustee Horton, I know this was a really big topic for you and something that you worked a lot on during your time before serving. So I want to open, do you have any other conversation or- have any other conversation or discussion you want to make on this topic, or about our bus and transportation?
About the transportation, well, I do know that it is a pretty big concern for parents, like us in the Woodlands, that kids are arriving home late, that we don't necessarily provide services across busy roads, so it is something that I would like, you know, to hopefully revisit. You and I talked a little bit about the Mitchell-McCalla start and end times being the exact same, but I think it's something that would maybe need further research and discussion.
And I would say just some of the things we've done, we've adjusted start times this year, so Dr. Merle, high school's seven-ten, seven-fifteen? And so, one thing too, we've worked with high schools, we have security money to allow children to get off the buses earlier upon the first arrival of the first run to the high schools, for to be supervised and to study, to get on their way to the second tier, and then the same thing at the second tier to get to the third tier. I'm just being completely transparent here, it's quite a challenge. And then it's even more of a challenge when you get to East County with the expansive distances that we travel in the Canyon Creek feeder. And we work exhaustively to try to make it happen, and we just, there is no one magic answer, it's just constantly tweaking, identifying routes, working around road closures, or various things that are roadblocks, literally, not just figuratively, to get people there, because to me, as a principal, it's important to get students there in the morning, not just in time for school, but my goal, and our goal, is to get students there in time to eat breakfast and to pull themselves together. You know, sometimes Dr. Noel and I'll get here really early, and he'll be here, but I just don't run in there as soon as I get, we all need a chance to pull ourselves together. But the kids are the same way, they're just younger and they don't have keys. They need a chance to pull themselves together, so we try really hard to make that happen.
One note to the McCullough and Mitchell.
Microphone, microphone, sir.
Here, take mine.
Oh my gosh, Mr. McCord gave up his mic.
I know, they got, gosh. I don't know what to do with it now. The, one of the adjustments we did make to help with Mitchell-McCalla, because they're on the same tier, is we adjusted Mitchell's end time to help with start time and end time, so it gave a little bit of flexibility in there, so parents could move from Mitchell to McCullough a little bit easier and be a little bit more on time to help with that. So that was a request that was made, that we adjusted that early in the year.
Trustee Horton and Semler, I do, I know that I've spoken with both of you regarding your concerns about the busing and the zoning and all of that, I don't want to cut anyone else out on it, but I just wanted that to be public, that we have discussed it.
Well, I mean, bigger picture, it does appear when we're looking at the maps, especially with the Isler rezon, that there still is some cutting across the district, and when we're looking at the budget and transportation costing so much on a recurring basis, I think, you know, when we're considering our rezoning maps, that might be something to look at.
Well, and I appreciate you taking it on and moving and asking those questions, and knowing that someone from up here is looking at that and digging into it, and then getting back to us or asking to have a discussion on it, so I just wanted to share that with you, because I personally, well, you see it from another perspective, but I personally don't see what you all are seeing of buses crossing and lack of busing, bus options for kids that are crossing in dangerous situations, or what you're concerned is dangerous situations, and so on and so forth, so for you to have that perspective and bring it back to us is really important, because not all of us come from the same perspective of knowledge.
It's also, I think it's hard on parents to be really far from a school. You know, if you're thirty minutes away from your child's elementary school, it's hard to get up to the school for conferences and four different school events and things like that.
And if we're talking about ADA too, if they miss the bus, you know, and then parents have to drive farther, you know, I think that all plays in as well, the distance.
Yeah, for sure, I think the distance is...
Well, and it's not just the thirty minutes, the thing that, like, impacted my thought process when you were bringing some of this to my attention, was that you've got that thirty-minute drive as a parent up there for your conference, but, or for, to take your kid their lunch that got left behind or whatever, but then there's that thirty minutes back, so that missed lunch, other than buying lunch on campus, is an hour, or that missed, or that meeting that you had is an hour. And so, plus that time for that meeting, et cetera, so I think that's something to be cognizant of, and I, like I said, I just don't see it from that perspective. Now, going out to Bartlett for the dedication, and going out to Canyon Creek for the back-to-school pep rally and different things like that, just recently, I mean, I've been around there before, but just recently, I'm noticing the narrower roads, I'm noticing the long distances between locations, I'm noticing darker areas when there's an earlier start for the high schools in the morning, or kids getting home. I mean, let's face it, it's darker now at this time of night, it was getting dark when we came in for our meeting, and these kids are, some of them are getting out of Intermediate or Junior High at, you know, later in the afternoon, so it makes a difference in safety and so forth, and I just, I appreciate, I really appreciate the job of...
We don't envy your jobs, like, we can tell that, you know, it's a very hard job to do, and I appreciate, you know, personally, communication I've had as a parent with transportation, I'm just, you know, saying as we're looking on it, rezoning scenarios, that that might be something to consider.
All right, any other discussion on this? I'm sorry, we kind of monopolize down here. Okay, all right, thank you very much. Are we good moving on to the next topic then, everyone? Okay. All right, we're on to discussion item C, discuss comprehensive goals for the district and the superintendent in accordance with the Texas Education Code eleven point one-five-one-one B-two. And under this education code, we as a board, I'll just start and open with this, I should say, we as a board have many specific powers and duties, and some of them are that we are to adopt a vision statement and comprehensive goals for the district and the superintendent, and monitor progress towards those goals. We're to establish performance goals for the district concerning the academics and fiscal performance indicators under subchapter C, D, and J, and chapter thirty-nine of Public School System Accountability, and performance indicators adopted by the district. We're also to ensure that the superintendent is accountable for achieving performance results, recognizes performance accomplishments, and takes action as necessary to meet performance goals. I share all of this with you now to give an understanding to, I mean, all of, most of who's left here are just people from the district, so you know and understand, but for those that may be watching at home or watch this later, I'm sharing this, this next segment with you and this information, because so many really don't know the role of a school board, I actually just had someone say, ah, and it was an employee of the district, exactly what does the school board do back last week? And so that made me realize, you know what, a lot of people really don't know and understand, so why trustees may be involved with different aspects of district operations and direction, well, not operation, but direction. And so tonight, we're here to begin a discussion on the comprehensive goals that we as a board find most important. This is only discussion, well, it will likely last more than just tonight, we wanted to just get the ball rolling and have talk about it. Dr. Noel and I have been in communication, and I know you have something to share, I don't know if you want Dr. Medford to go first, or something you want to share. I know it's been a long time since this has, as a board, it was over twenty years since they've done this, and...
Oh, wait, two, three, four, five. You know, we haven't, the previous boards that have had goals, you know, understood the goals from the district improvement plan, but what, where I believe we're lacking, and have been lacking long-term, is with a formal strategic planning process, right, to really, and Dr. Medford's going to share a little bit here in a second, just, we have goals kind of everywhere, right? House Bill Three has goals, we have district improvement plan goals, campuses all have goals, so we have, there's a lot of things that exist. I think the missing component has been a concerted effort at a strategic plan that would help to align all of those goals, which then, I think would make perfect sense to be, you know, helps to pull all those goals in directly under the goals that you all would set as a board. So we just had not done one in a long while, I mentioned this to President Odenweiler earlier today, is when I became superintendent, we spoke as a board then, we walked right into bond planning process, and the goal was, after that bond planning process, we would go into this strategic planning process, because it's a big deal, it is, it's a big committee, it's the, it's like a bond committee, it's a big thing. We were going to go directly into that, well, COVID happened, and so it got delayed, we came out of COVID and we were hoping to go into strategic planning, but because we grew at such a fast rate, we had to move the bond, the next bond moved up a year, so we had to do a bond before the strategic plan, which was not the goal initially. But I was, started talking to the board two years ago about, this was a window that I felt like would be appropriate, bond is over, we knew we would have a board election in November, new board, so now it looks like to me to be an appropriate window, if you all choose to go that route, to do a strategic plan and help get us, you know, get all stakeholders involved and make it happen, so. And I know Dr. Medford has some to share, different areas, I have your handouts here that I'll, I'll pass out as well, if you want to talk about what these are, so.
Hello again, good to see all of you. So what I did was just put something together kind of briefly to help with the conversation this evening, so it's not anything finished, it's just kind of a work in progress. What you have is, I was shared Sci-Fair's policy, their board monitoring kind of system, and I took that and kind of gave an idea of what maybe it could look like, again, just a talking point, just a starting point. So with that, and then at the very end, there's like a one-pager about the effective schools framework, so to kind of start, as Dr. Noel mentioned, we've kind of worked, not kind of, we worked really hard to take all of the different pieces where we have goals and really streamline them, so that everybody understands, like, where we're headed and what we're trying to do, even within all the different pieces that all the departments have to do. So that kind of starts with our district improvement plan, that's led through Mr. Fuller's department, over sixty people have input and work in the plan, whether that's through an objective or a strategy, so it's a really massive project. But that, those goals kind of stemmed from what's called the effective schools framework, this is a TEA kind of structure that districts use across the state, it just helps align all the vocabulary, as you know, and I shared your little one-pager of all the acronyms and all the different vocabulary that we like to use. The state really worked about five or so years ago to have a model, research base that says, this is what effective schools do, and then what do districts do to support those? So back in two thousand twenty-one was the last time we kind of reframed the main, what I would call five goals that we use for our district improvement plan, and that came from this framework. So this is just a little screenshot for you to see what those components are, obviously, we talked about it with attendance, what's the best thing to happen for kids, is that face-to-face time during instruction with the teacher, right? So that's the center part, that's the main piece. Then what do we need to have that happen? Well, that's the positive school culture, the high-quality instructional materials and assessment, strategic staffing, and through all of that, we need really strong leadership and really great planning, that's where budget comes in, and all of those things that make this puzzle, right, work and stay together. So that's where this kind of comes from, I gave you, the one-pager has, within those levers, what is like the highest yield goal, just to not overwhelm you, because y'all know I can get excited about things and talk about it too much and give you way too much information. So my goal is to not do that tonight, so we'll see, you'll have to let me know how we do here. So these are the five kind of overarching areas that we focus on through our district improvement plan, and those are tied back to that effective schools framework, to where we look at the student achievement, post-secondary readiness, that's the goal that has, what is it, eighteen performance objectives in it, and within those performance objectives has upwards to nine or ten strategies, maybe, right? So big, meaty, that's the important part, right? Then with, to support that, you need really strong leadership, and that's where that planning comes in, with our budget and the fiscal piece, then we want to recruit and retain our great people, we want to develop them, we want to have that safe and collaborative school culture, that's where you see a lot of discipline, a lot of working with the community, all of that piece, and then the effective instruction, pulling that out to making sure that that remains a big focus. So that's where we start, and then we do all of the needs assessment and those things as we start working on, on the district improvement plan. So just kind of a very quick overview of where we got the information, the idea quote from, and then where we are with our goals. It plays into, as you know, we have a campus that is under comprehensive improvement, right? And they work through the effective schools framework diagnostic to pinpoint, so when we go to that campus to work on it and the region center comes in, they're using the same vocabulary, right? And their campus improvement plan ties, it matches, it's just, it's been a really positive thing, we've seen a lot of growth and a lot of improvement since doing that, so kudos to the team that worked on that. I was on campus when it was rolled out, and I just remember how nice it was to have all that consistency, so that's been a big goal for us.
Sorry, can I just ask one question while we're on it? So these five goals are based off the effective schools framework, and you designed them in two thousand twenty-one?
Correct.
So with the improvement plans, is it, it's the same goals every single year?
So these haven't, these don't change, what changes in them is what the focus is. Within this, what do we want to work on, what do we need to improve on that ties to this, this is all, this is what we feel like is important to have a highly successful campus and district. So then, and if these are the most important things, then each year we look at, what do we need to do to get better within each of those, and we set goals, we monitor those, at the end of the year, we look and see, how did we do, do we need to continue that goal? A lot of them, we continue, right, because they're really important, and some of them, we close out, and we move forward, and we do that comprehensive needs assessment happens every single summer. This is also what we use with district level, Planning and Decision Making Committee, all of this is run through them, so every time we meet with them, one of these goals is presented to them to get feedback, because it's a constant progress monitoring, adjusting, it's a living document. So we just had the budget one where we presented to them a lot of what you saw, we get feedback from them, and then we apply that to, to the plan, and we roll that into, so they just approved, they went through this process with us this year and approved the district improvement plan before it came to you. So that's really kind of the cycle that we work through within these goals. Each time we meet with them, we focus on a different goal, where we present updates to them and get feedback.
But for example, goal one in the district improvement plan might be forty pages long?
Probably.
Probably close, so there's many objectives and measurables under that one overarching...
Within the district improvement plan, right? Because I noticed, are we filling in that, the monitoring plan, I mean, is that available to the public, the progress, the monitoring that you're doing over the year?
So all of our district improvement plan, well, once it's approved, it's posted on our website, and that's, that's where, that's where it stays.
I just mean like, when you're actually monitoring.
When it's updated, so we update it in December, we update it in March, and we update it in June, and so then that's when, those are the formal monitoring, progress monitoring times.
And that's when you update it online?
And so you'll see, I know not everybody can see, but there's these little, once we have the formative review in December, there'll be a little circle that shows a percentage of where we are with that goal, like, how close are we, our goal was to increase five percent, it'll show how, you know, are we one percent closer, so we're twenty percent to the goal, right? And these will fill in in December, March, and then June.
Okay, I have a question, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I have a question on these five goals that you put out here, are they, like, in any order of priority, or are they all equal priority? Because to me, goal five should be upfront. If we have effective instruction, student achievement, and post-secondary success will come, but that's why I'm wanting to know what's the priority of these goals.
I believe, because they're a goal, they're important. If it's important enough to write it down, they're important, and they hold, now, the weight and what, within there, I think it depends on what you're measuring and what you're doing, but to me, these are the five goals, they all hold equal weight.
Okay.
Dr. Medford, where did this list of five goals originate?
It came from that effective schools framework, there was a team that worked through that, we had, I believe, seven goals at the time, they looked at our mission, our vision, the state goals, where we were with our district goals, and then made the recommendation to make these our five goals, because of what, the work we had put into our effective schools framework.
So a committee did it, not the board, not any previous board?
This was presented to the board in May of two thousand twenty-one.
But it was, it was developed by a committee?
And presented to the board, correct. Our, the effective schools framework is also what we use for all of our leadership development, everything we, like, again, tying everything back in. So then, as those are the overarching topics, so then this is what I, this was my, just a little draft, what it could possibly be.
If I, if I could jump in just a second, so the handouts that I gave you, I sent you all this electronically earlier today, this is just a printout of what was sent electronically. Trustee Dawson shared this, this piece that she liked from Sci-Fair of their board monitoring system, and so that's, that's what Dr. Medford remarkably... And so that's, that's what Dr. Medford remarkably in the last, less than 24 hours, basically put together just a framework of what this could look like based on what we have. And, you know, we didn't, we didn't go all the way through. She just did goal one to sort of show you what, what it could look like. If it's something that you all desire in the future, we could absolutely, you know, build the whole thing out. But that's.
I just wanted to make a comment, context really. So first of all, I'm super excited about this. I love strategy, planning, goals, monitoring. You know, one thing that I've noticed watching the board meetings the last couple of years is there's a lot of focus on, you know, the business of running a district, which is absolutely essential. We need to do that. I don't hear as much a routine and systematic focus on improving student learning outcomes and focusing on student achievement. I, I hear it in intervals, but it's not on a monthly basis. And so, you know, when I was doing some research on what other ISDs have done, I, I noticed Sci Fair, they have their goals, you know, very similar to, to what you guys have. There's a few differences. But really what I loved was their board monitoring system. So they would take their goals, just like you have done, have specific objectives and ways that the board can monitor that because that's our job. And that's where I think there has been a lack of from the board. And that's on us, that's on the board. We need to have more monitoring of what is the whole reason that we're in existence, which is student learning outcomes. So I'm really glad we're doing this. And I agree with, there was a comment, public comment about Dr. Noel and his leadership. Absolutely fabulous. And, you know, we want to partner with you guys and understand what you already have, how we can strengthen that and how we can monitor to actually get to be a better district. Because we're a really good district, but we're a B district. I want to get us to an A district. And that's going to come by digging into the data, talking about it every month. So I love that you have already put this together. And again, we can talk about the details of it, but the structure of it, I'm just really excited about. So thank you.
No, I appreciate the opportunity. I could talk about this stuff all the time. And we do have a structure, again, based on what, what you guys want. We have a, a system that we use with our district level. We're like, it's every time we meet, we focus on one. We can easily apply that to whatever you guys wish. The rotation system setup on how we monitor it and how we share it with them. So that would be wonderful.
Um, because this is discussion mode, I'm going to turn to you, trustee Dawson. Is that something that you would like to see come to the board meeting? Is that that's shared or to our workshop on a time to give us the update on it? As far as when, when she's, when they're doing their updates, that then we're updated, but then that's also updating transparently to the public?
Yeah, I think it's increasing transparency. Yeah, I think it's, it's great, so.
Something for us to consider and, and figure out logistically, you know, what that would look like, how much time, you know, so that we are, we don't overload the agendas when that comes up.
I think one of the, and I think Dr. Medford may have this in our presentation, but one of the things that we could do is, you know, one of the tools that we currently have is the Boardogram that need, that I send out every Friday to the board that is due for some updating. And so part of that could be including, you know, pieces of this into that. So you see it more often? And then take pieces of that that maybe you have, you have already seen over the month and then present it publicly at the next work. So you've already seen it, but then we, we can share out some pieces of it, highlights of it publicly as well. That way, everybody is getting a chance to see it, but, but you've had a chance to digest it before it comes out, you know, out here as well. So we could make that happen.
I, I really like that idea as well because I was going over the district improvement plan today and I saw the little graph and I was wondering, you know, when it was updated, where we are on those items. So I think if we could get updated on them more frequently, that would be really helpful.
And I really like that you stated, get it to us before so we can read it and digest it. I found the fact that we got Ms. Garza's preliminary budget, even though we didn't get it as early as was planned, but we got it in time. It made it so much easier to make it to be meaningfully informed and, and to understand, digest, think about questions. I had a chance to talk with you about them before coming. So I, I just, I, I appreciate when we get, in your case, I'm just going to say, you pulled this together in 24 hours. I, I respect that. I, I really give you kudos for that because as we started asking the questions, there was a need for more info and I appreciate what you did, Dr. Medford. But getting things ahead of time makes a huge difference to me. And I understand that as an educator amongst students. So having more before and being able to go through it makes a difference.
And we're, and we've been efforting to do that. We'll continue to effort, just the, it'll always be the same ask, just give us grace on changes. We'll, we'll always send it early, but it's always going to be a draft because most things we're working on until probably about four o'clock on meeting day. So there's always going to be some changes, but they're not significant, you know? Like we added, I think, one slide to Ms. Garza's presentation tonight that we, we discovered we needed this morning and so that, but otherwise it was.
I think that goes for us as well. We're preparing and getting our stuff. I'm speaking for myself, I shouldn't speak for everyone else. But I'm preparing and getting ready up until the moment I get. And sometimes I'm still doing it on a call or something in the car on my way here. So, yeah.
I appreciate you.
I think the goal is, you know, in some of the training that we've received so far, you know, each school board meeting, to the extent we can, up to 50% should be focused on student learning outcomes. So I know that that's a big ask and maybe we can work up towards that. I don't want to have really long meetings either, just to caveat. But that is the goal to kind of work this more into the board meetings, so.
Sounds great. And what we can work, work with Dr. Noel on kind of an idea of what, what the plan could be. But just to share you, just to share with you kind of the very quick idea, taking that feedback from Sci Fair and, and adding it to what we kind of already do, is these are the objectives from goal one in the district improvement plan. So what you received in the 102-page document that is like our baby, because it was a lot of work. We, I just pulled out the objectives and pulled out the evidence, what we used. And of course, you guys love that those are all acronyms. And then we do formally progress monitor December, March and June. But then what we didn't get to today, because it was just, again, ideas, is using the Boardogram to, so that you know when you'll get a detailed update on that. Just because it's December, some of them could come sooner. Some of them need some time, right? We need to have some assessments before we could have the Boardogram date. But if we could populate when the departments would share that with you, then you would know, instead of wonder, right? When you would get that update. And then like we said, we could take those pieces and do a little more generic overview at these meetings. So I just, this is just goal one so that you could see the different pieces. There are a lot of them because as you know, in order to measure something effectively, you need one data set. So when we're looking at something that goes from third grade to eighth grade, we need an objective for every grade level. So some of them really, there's a lot of them, but they're really one. If that makes sense. We just monitor them separately because we want to find where that outlier is.
One, one thing on the assessment and being able to watch for the evidence of the progress. One thing I really don't want to do is add more evaluation than testing. Right now, I have, that's another thing I hear from teachers. We spend more of our time testing for benchmarks and, and this and that. At that, that they're lucky, if they have enough time to teach the material, to even give their assessment of what they've taught to have a grade for the grade book.
And if, and please let me know if you have an example of a campus that we'll check into it because we do have what we recommend. And then we just want to make sure that it doesn't become too much because you're absolutely right. So these, we don't add.
Hold on one second. Sorry, I have a mint because I was getting a little dry mouthed. But then that, I'm just going to say, teachers, do you hear that? Let us know if we need to, or administrators, let us know if there is a problem with this so we can make an adjustment on it.
So we don't add assessments to monitor the goal. We use the assessments that are best practice in place to monitor. So that's why there were some, like I mentioned, there are some that I, you know, we, we might want to know how we're doing on the reading goal in October, but we don't want to add an assessment to give you an update, right? We want it to be when it's appropriate, what best practice says. So we have those quarterly assessments built in. So you'll see some of those more, you know, content-based updates after the quarterly assessments, right? That, that's, and that's why the Boardogram date, I think, would be helpful for you guys. There are some, the dropout rate, we can tell you where we are with that by the end of September because that's when it's due. We can give you at least an update. It may not be the final number. So does that make sense? So that's why those evidence of progress is there. And then where the progress monitoring falls, because that's the formal date. I don't know if that made any sense.
Just a quick question. Are the quarterly assessments, is that a Connor ISD thing or is that all the districts in Texas?
That is, that is our, those are our assessments.
What is used as the assessments? Do we write the assessments?
Yes, we do.
Is that done at the district level or school level?
Teaching and learning department writes them. With, we collaborate with all of our campus coaches. When they come in for their coaching collaboratives and we, or symposiums, we work with our campus coaches to, to help with everything we do in teaching and learning because we're so tiny up here. But that is created so that's consistent across the district.
That was my question.
And I'm assuming they're aligned to the TEACs so that.
Absolutely. Through that quarter.
So we know where the students are.
We, we know every student, you know, by content, by standard. How they're, how they're doing and, and monitoring, monitoring those pieces. So just, just an idea, again, thrown together quickly, but what we could do. And then we could, like I said, then update y'all in kind of the same rotation as we do district level.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
Do you see these goals being different than the district improvement plan goals? Or is it just kind of a redundancy? Like you're just extracting information and putting it in here now?
I made no changes to the district improvement plan. I took them from there and put them in this, in this document.
Summary of some sort. So it's just a summary, but the goals will be identical.
These are identical. This was, what I was trying to do was an idea of a way to, where you didn't have to dig through 102 pages to find out.
Condensed it for us, yeah.
Yes, condensed it for you to, it's not a one pager, but the idea of it being a, a smaller document without all the strategies, where you just saw, what are we working on? When am I, what are they using for it? And then when will I get an update? That was just the idea behind it.
Do you think there's a place for us to be a little more bullish with our goals in this one? Just for our district as opposed to the district improvement plan?
I mean, that, that's, you know, obviously up to you guys. I just would want to, for, for my sake, is making sure that we can monitor them all and then, and work to achieve them, right? So we don't have goals here, goals there. That's one thing that the district improvement plan does. We do have the RDA goals, right? That were required. We shared that. We have everything that Title I requires. All the legal requirements are all in the dip. The same thing with our HB3 goals. All of those things are separate plans that we have to have, but they're all tied together through the district improvement plan. So that's what makes this and why we've made this kind of, as I called it earlier, our baby. Because if this is the document that houses everything, then we need to use it as such. So if, you know, we always take feedback on what we could change, what we could add. But that's why we've really put an emphasis on this document and the campus improvement plan, which is the little sister, right? To this big document. Today, there was a team that went out to one of our junior highs to talk about progress in seventh grade math. And in the PowerPoint where they had the data, all the conversations they were talking about, they pulled out that campus's campus improvement plan goal to talk about it. So that's how far we're going to trying to tie everything together so that we're speaking the same language and they don't feel like, wait, what are we working on? So that's, that's the only reason why we have it this way.
I'm not sure I'm picking up 100% on what trustee May was just stating and what you're saying matching up. When she was asking about the being more bullish, like could we, are we setting our goals high enough? Or are we just setting them so we know we're going to meet them? Because one of the rules of 101 of goal setting is, is you want them to be high enough that you're having to strive and really work to get there. But if you're going to really have meaningful growth, but you don't want them so high that, that no one feels like they can ever achieve them. And so being a little, if I'm understanding what you're saying, being, when I saw on the page, the one goal that you, you put together for us and did it, I think it was on history? If I'm not mistaken, I don't. It showed that we had like 82 or 80, oh, maybe it was, well, here's one in particular, U.S. history. Increased performance levels on TEACs, 11.28. And it says from 80% to 82%. Is that, oh, I, I mean, I, I'm asking, is that really pushing it? Or is that just, oh, okay, we, we, let's get it to this one and next time we'll try to go to the next one. I mean, that's what I'm, I'm asking. Are we being bullish enough on it?
No, I, I completely understand. And I think there's a fine line. I will tell you, we don't hit all of our goals every year. So I do think we have a pretty good balance and that's the idea to watch, right? I will tell you, the higher it is, the harder it is to move because these are district goals, right? So we're talking about moving the entire, what is that? U.S. history, retire group of juniors, which is an interesting group anyway, right? To, who are already at 80% mastery, up to 82%. So that, that's a pretty good jump when you're already at a high number. So, so that's where the balance is finding. So as we prog, as we watch our goals each year, then we see, well, we went really far. So let's, let's push that one next year. So we, we ebb and flow. There's a lot of variables, right? From year to year, teachers, cadre of kids, all of those things. But we're a pretty competitive group and we're ready for the A2. We talk about it a lot. Pathway to an A is a big deal for us. We try not to be overly focused on that because we believe if we do these things well, that will happen. But we're pretty competitive ourselves.
Yeah, I've watched our district for a long time and clearly very competitive group here and loves to beat everybody in our peer districts. And it looks like we do that very regularly. So this is just an internal, you know, push from just within ourselves, right? And for me, obviously, you can see me coming a mile away. Let's talk about literacy, right? Like the reading on grade level. So going from 52% to 56%, that still leaves a large percentage of our students not reading, right? So that's, that's really more where I was saying, can we be bullish on that specifically?
And when we can adjust that, I mean, I think that's kind of a good example of, this is also at, the other one was a TEAC, so one specific strand, right? That we teach. This one is on the total test. You can see the difference that it's 4% instead of 2%. We're a much lower number at that middle place. So that, that's the difference and that's why. But we can, we can strive and.
I think the way I'm understanding what Ms. May is saying is that we're, we're only striving for 56% even though it's four points higher than the 52, but we're still under 60% of our overall readers.
But don't let the numbers confuse you. We're striving for 100%. But there's a reality of, because every kid is a story. Every number is a story.
Understood, but still, that 50 is tough to see.
Well, no doubt. But when, when we may have 40% of our children or, or more that enter kindergarten that have never seen a book or don't know a single letter, by third grade, it, 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 that may be where we are. Now, we would think by fourth grade, we would get better.
I would hope by third, we would be higher, yeah.
And I think the strands themselves are indicative too versus just looking at the tests. I know from the collaborative we were talking about, that we're looking at, you know, a specific TEAC and we're making sure that they really get that TEAC because that's a TEAC that builds on to the next TEAC. So I think the strand shows a lot of data as well, you know, versus just the test, in my opinion.
I, I, the other thing, just to point out, the first one listed up there, that's the HB3 goal, which will be due to be revised probably sometime this spring or summer. So we'll bring those HB3 goals back to you and you'll be able to see the progress. Also update you on those in the annual report. But that, that's a goal that's been set through House Bill 3. So that one's a little bit different because that one was, is set separately and has to be in the, but you can see where, in order to improve that number, you can see where it all ties in to all of the different grade levels. And if you look at the strategies underneath each one, you'll be able to see where we're, we're working to, to move forward on that.
So let me, I mean, the, the district improvement plan seems like it's a beast that you guys have been working on for a long time, it seems like. So I don't want to mess up all the work that you guys have done. But if we wanted to make edits or suggestions, change even some of the numbers, some of the goals, like when, when do you guys revisit this document?
So December is when we will do our formative review, our first formative review.
December, like right now? Okay. Oh, is that the next board meeting we're going over?
The, the next board, so because there was a lot of change, we moved, we didn't feel like we should give you 71 campus improvement plans to review the day you did your board orientation. So that's why they're in December. But you'll approve this plan and all the campus ones in December. But they're always a work in progress and we can always adjust them as needed. So that could be the other thing. We could bring. So, that could be the other thing. We could bring, you know, if we could, if we approve these in December, then the campuses start their formative review process. Then, when we come back to you, we could share those updates with you in January. And then we could look to see, you could say like, see, I told you, y'all were doing so much better than you thought. We should bump this up, right? This is a working document.
So, we have 71 to review for approval come December 17th, correct? Okay. And I know you already sent it, because I've opened it and gone, holy grail. But is that, is that something so that we can realistically digest this? Is that something that we need to look at breaking up and looking in segments? And then come back for discussion?
No. I would, my suggestion would be that we focus on the district, at the district level. Because don't the campus level improvement plans, aren't they reflective of the goal set here?
Yes, they're just specific to their campus.
I think as a board, at least in my opinion, I think it's, it's best if we keep it at a district level so that that can filter into the campus level improvement plans as possible. So, like, given that each campus has its own.
They have their own goals, right.
And every campus improvement plan has been reviewed and approved by the Assistant Superintendent for that. So, you know, like, they've been through a process and worked as well. So, there's been a level of oversight on the, on the campus plans.
And what I'm saying is, any changes we were to make could be done here and then trickle into a campus level.
Absolutely.
In my opinion, just to keep it higher.
For example, this is the district's goal on TEAC 8.5E from 50 to 55, right? But we have campuses who are much higher than that. Their goal isn't that goal. Their goal is to improve what they were at, at their individual campus. And then we take how all of the campuses do, put them together and make a district goal, right? So, you're not going to see that objective on, you know, McCullough's Campus Improvement Plan. At that number, they'll have a different one.
Should we perhaps pay special attention to campuses that are struggling, maybe? Like, would it be better for us to kind of go over that in more detail?
It's really, it's really up to you and what, what you're interested in, what you want to see, what you want to look at. So, those, so Title campuses also have another layer of approval that they go through, through our federal programs, that have to check them for all the federal requirements. They have the money attached to them. So, they also have that layer. But you're really welcome to, to look at whichever, whichever campus you're interested in. Or really, maybe you want to take one from each feeder zone, just to look at, I mean, I don't know. It's really kind of up to you and what your interest level is, because there's a lot, I get that. They are very similar. They're all structured the same. They all, that's the nice part. They all look the same.
I think your point there is sort of well-made. You know, and we'll, for our four new trustees, we'll, we'll be touring over the next two weeks and you're going to get a chance to see. But, and, and perhaps our, our three experienced trustees would, can speak to this even a little more. But I think one of the things you, you, you will be somewhat shocked by is the variability in our schools. But it's, you know, we, we, we might, we might be in a school that's at 97% EcoDiscs. And then we might leave that school and go, and the next school we walk in might be 4% EcoDiscs. And it is, they're very different challenges and very different goals and very different things and strategies that they're working on. So, you know, perhaps that idea of just, you know, uh, you could certainly look at all of them if you want to, but that's, it's a lot. But perhaps that idea of like, just pull one from each feeder, just to see the difference, you know? Because it, it is different. And their goals are different. Where they are and where they're trying to get to in the immediate future is, it just, it might be an interesting exercise, maybe, just to see that.
And I'm by no means saying that each school shouldn't have the highest standard. I'm just saying that as a district, if, if everything is balanced into this one district level improvement, then it should account, I mean, we can, if we raise the standards here, that's going to trickle down into, I mean.
No, I agree. I think when you think of board governance, what you're saying is exactly on point, right? To set a vision for the district that then trickles to, that is the.
So, if we raise it here, it's going to raise it there.
Right. You know, the only thing I would just caution us on is, you know, arbitrarily changing numbers in the plan. Like, those numbers were, were created based on data, you know? So, it's easy to, like, I wish they all said 100, you know? But, you know, we just can't look here and say like, well, we don't, we want to go, we don't like 56. We want to go, that should just be 60. Well, you know, there was a lot, a whole process that went into 56. And, you know, from historical data to state data to all the pieces. I just want to be careful that we just don't start plucking numbers that, that there's a team that has spent a lot of time analyzing to create a number. I think it's fine to say like, we, we want to, we want to reach, like, so, we'd like the, the future numbers to be some reach goals. That, that's, seems very appropriate. I just don't want us to be arbitrary, because.
Well, and, and that, to me, I understand exactly what you're saying. And knowing that these are geared and targeted specifically for each individual campus, I, I get that. But back to part of what Trustee May and Dawson were saying, and, and as well as Trustee Dungen as well. I, I think that overall, let's just take reading in general, or literacy, the ability to, if we, if we cannot get that reading score stronger and higher district-wide, regardless of what school, campus, whatever, if that whole district score doesn't come up, it affects everything. It affects math. Math right now has more reading in it than it ever has.
The science one too.
It's, it's science, history, there is so much that is there. And if you can't read, how can you possibly write? If you, if you don't read fluently, how can you possibly become a writer? You know, just, there's just, everything comes down to this whole reading and literacy part in that regard, which I think is where HB3 was targeted. And I know that where we are on the sped issue, it is, it's really, I just think we need to make that a priority and goal as well, to make, to, to see whatever. And I know we are by campus, by campus. But I think, and I, I don't want to go against your numbers per campus, but as, but as a district, I think we need a reach goal on raising, how can we get the whole district? What is our whole district reading level to get it, to get it up and make it better?
Well, I, you have such great timing, because our HB3 goals are due to be updated in 2025. So, that, and that's what that goal is. So, I think this is a perfect time for us to have that conversation, knowing that we will be updating that very specific goal that we're talking about. We could have updated it any year. Don't misunderstand. But it's, it is time to, to update it. So, I think all of these conversations and points are very timely. And I think it, it leads us right to where, to where we are. So, it's kind of a perfect segue into, into what we're doing. And we'll update you. This is another reason why Mr. Fuller's team spent, I don't want to ask him how much time, but, and they were able to pinpoint these specific TEACs that they saw district-wide that could make the biggest impact in reading. And we've spent with our Teaching and Learning Department and Student Support Services and all of our schools, like, this is, this is one of the things, you know, we look district, at the district level, at the big picture. And this is something that they were able to find in the big picture that, that is across the district. And so, those are the things that make us excited, spending the time to pinpoint those things and to make a plan to move forward so that we can move the needle on the big number, because we know that's, that's where the difference is going to be made. So, all of that, all of the work and the excitement that I can feel them behind me, because they've been working so hard on it, like, they're excited about hearing y'all talk about it, I promise.
Well, and I appreciate that.
Sorry, I just want to say too, I, I hear your point. We're not going to arbitrarily put numbers on this.
Yeah, absolutely.
Please, please hear me. I, I want to hear how you get to those numbers, because those numbers matter, right? The percentages that we're, we're trying to get, those numbers matter. So, I want to hear how you get to those. But it's also our job to push you a little bit, to be a little uncomfortable, like, got to get to the A level.
And I appreciate that, because what it does is it guides me, because also your job is to provide resources to the campuses to meet your goals. So, that when you say, we, reading is the goal, all these things, and I do a lot of research and I see other districts that maybe are outperforming us, and I see the resources that they are providing to their campuses, then I, I want to be able to come to you and say, I've heard you. You want these things. These are the things that I think can help. And, and that, but that helps guide me, right? It helps give me the direction of what, what you want to focus on, which is great. And I appreciate that.
And that was, if I can, that was one of my questions, just as a tieback to some of what we were looking at with Ms. Garza, was how much we spend per student. If we spent more per student, do you think, and I know there's not a crystal ball, but would learning outcomes improve, right?
You, there's no way, part of that, you could say, it's like, you could hire more people, but if you don't hire the right people, then it won't make a difference, right? But when you, when you look at, you know, comparable districts, that, as we've been going through this process throughout the year, and, and Dr. Medford and I have had multiple conversations, because I've asked her to, to, to help me really analyze this, is like, I'll, I'll look at our elementary compared to a neighboring district's elementary, and I just look at staffing. And they have like five academic interventionists in a, in an elementary building in which we have zero. So, you know, they, they have fi- five people just to go in and help kids that we don't, we don't employ. So, those would be an example. Now, if you had the wrong people or they weren't doing the right things, would it make a difference? No. Is it going to, is it going to take you from 56 to 97? Probably not. You know, it might take you from 56 to 62. Is that enough? Those are all the questions. Part of our history, once again, just the, the life of previous boards, has been, keep tax rate low. Do the best you can. It could just, it just may be a different philosophy at some point where we say, we need to make that investment. But there's, I don't think, you know, we're just deal with, we deal with humans, so there's never going to be a guarantee, right? Like, I, I could never, I don't think I'd ever be able to sit here and say like, you know, if you just put a reading interventionist at every elementary, we're going to up our scores by 10 points.
And, and I think.
It'll probably get better, but I don't know.
I think it's important to note that, and as you understand on this, because we've discussed it, that throwing more money at a situation isn't necessarily the answer. It's where you target that money to be used and what you're, you're spending that money on. And is it the curriculum that we use and spend money on? Is it the, the quality of teachers and interventionists and instructional coaches? The whole, the whole thing that has to be looked at is, is what is it that our students need and our teachers need to make that educational outcome the absolute best? What is that cost? What is that nugget and what is that cost? So that we can then come to the answer of, do we just not have enough? Or is it that we need to reallocate it differently? And, and I think that's a targeted question for us to, to be asking. Because even, even getting more money from, from the state isn't necessarily an answer if we don't know where the best place to spend it is and address that.
Absolutely. No, that'll be, that's what I mean. That'll be part of the, the questions that we have to answer moving forward, right? Let's just say, um, let's say the state gives us $40 million, right? I'm making that number up, right? But we just saw Karen's numbers, right? So, $31 million is a 5% raise or something, you know? But there may be a point where we have to go like, okay, well, what percentage does it make sense to do a raise? What percentage of that would we like to allocate to supply budgets? Because then that, that could make a difference, right? And then what percentage perhaps do we want to target some maybe special positions or extra pay to, to do some, there's a, because there, I agree with you. There are a million things that could be done. Part of it is us just maybe trying to research what other people, like, you know, the example I gave was just because we were really studying staffing. And, and so we, we, I just saw that and went, whoa. But there's a million other things that could be too. Not necessarily just staffing. It could, like you said, it could be curriculum, could be, you know, you, you get these people that can be great interventionists. But if you, if you can improve tier one basic instruction, then, then that becomes less, less the deal. Or if we can.
Or disciplined.
Well, right, but no doubt. But that's the thing, like, so then, is it, is it a behavior coach, right? If you, is, would, would getting a behavior coach in a school change the classroom environments for every kid? Even if they, you know, that behavior coach may only be interacting with 15 kids in the building, but it may change the, the learning environment for 900 kids. That could be significant as well. So, there's a million things, but that's where we just have to figure out, how do we allocate? That, now, like I said, goes back to, I appreciate the focus on the goals, because it helps to guide us. Then, as my job to allocate these resources, it helps guide me how you would like them allocated. So, I, I appreciate it.
So, Dr. Medford, did you have more? Or did we get through the end of yours?
No, this is, it was just a sample anyway, so.
Okay, so, I know Dawson, Trustee Dawson, you had some points that you wanted to share. So, go ahead.
Well, going back to the, to the local policy, the goals that we have now, I, I think it could make sense to, once we solidify which goals we're going to go with, to have those be in the local policy, specifically how it's written out in the improvement document. I don't know how you guys feel about that, but to me, again, we have a million goals. Let's just, you know, have it streamlined in, in one process. So, that's one thing to consider. I was just looking at other, you know, like SciFairs policies. And one thing that they have on here, you know, is, is operations management. I don't see any goal for operations. We talk about operations quite a bit in the board. So, to me, it makes sense to have something there. Effective instruction and student achievement, to me, seem a little redundant. Like, they could be combined. I'm just brainstorming here. I'm not saying we have to do anything.
Just real quickly, that's exactly what tonight is for. So, just throwing stuff.
Well, I'm just throwing stuff out there.
So, because we, because we cannot discuss any of this stuff outside of this room publicly, this is where our only opportunity for us to have this conversation comes about. So, feel free to throw those ideas out there so that we can hash them out, take them all, and try to compile it, and then come back with more information, so.
Yeah. Um, so, yeah, I, I think Goal 1 and 5 are, you know, effective instruction. I see that as kind of being underneath student achievement. In terms of Goal 2, school leadership and fiscal responsibility, those seem like different items to me. In SciFair, they have one on, you know, on human capital. So, basically focusing on getting high-quality, effective personnel, we could include leadership in that. Like, just staffing in general, I could see that being one. The safe and healthy, or, you know, collaborative school culture, I think that's good. I really just think we need to add in, I think we need to have one just on financial management. And went on to add one on operations, which we don't currently have. But I think some of it is just moving it around. I don't want to make you guys do a lot of work or anything. I'm just thinking outside the box, trying to make sure we're encompassing everything that this district is doing.
I don't disagree. And if we took leadership out and put it with the other, with Goal 3, the recruiting, retaining, then that would make Goal 2 fiscal, then we'd have the, so, I mean, I think, I think what you're saying is, if we tweak it a little bit, it's not changing anything. It's just to structure it a little bit cleaner.
And that way, we can measure more accurately, so.
Yeah. And we could look at those, oh, sorry.
I just want to make the point, these would be changes we'd have to make into next year, because the documents.
Well, and that's why I was asking.
The document's done for this year, but we could begin to tweak it and then for next years. I just want to make sure we're clear on that, because when it rolls back in two weeks, these changes.
When does it finalize for next year? I think that, we didn't get an answer.
It'll be, it'll be on the board agenda for next month.
Oh, you're saying next year as in the next calendar year?
Yeah, yeah. So, we, we'll be, the, the plan as it's written now and, and built with the goals as they're written now will be approved in two weeks. So, we can adjust and tweak these goals, but it would be for moving forward into the 25, 26. Yes. We can begin to, we can begin to work on it. It just won't, we won't see the changes. I just want to make sure we're, we're all on the same page. Like, we're not going to see those changes reflective in a couple of weeks in the plan.
Well, maybe we just update the board, the local board policy, and then we can eventually work on these other.
We build off of that in the next year. Absolutely.
That's exactly what we would do.
Because we'll start in the summer on next year. So, if we already had this going with what we knew we wanted, it would, then we'd start, we could work with our vendor to update our software. So, we do want to be ahead with it, but it's a good point. Please.
Well, and I think too, if we could label, you know, which ones are HB3, which ones are RDA, you know, state mandated goals, that would be helpful. But I also see, you know, we're kind of setting the overarching vision, right? The objectives and all of these things. I think, you know, Dr. Noel mentioning the strategic planning, I think that's where a lot of the objectives and things could be filled in in addition to all the state mandates that we already have to have, so.
So, if you, when you set the goals, then we, we would plug in the objectives that match the RDA plan and the HB3. So, once you set the goals, then we make all of the other stuff happen, because you would hit all of those components, if that makes sense. So, the objectives are what would change every year in here, based on what the data's telling us and the needs assessment. These overarching goals is what we would want. Your feedback? These overarching goals is what we would want your feedback on to set so that then we could go to work in the summer to create next year's plan.
And I think going back to my original point was, where did those goals that were in the dip, where did they come from? They didn't necessarily come from any previous policies, though by updating the policy on at the board level, then you could take from the policy, apply that to the improvement plan.
Right.
I think that's what you're saying.
Sure. If you're updating these goals into the policy.
We stick to the policy, right? And then you implement that.
I do think it's important to to listen to all the stakeholders too as we're making these objectives. I mean, there's definitely certain ones that are obvious, you know, you guys need to drive that, but a- as much as we can to bring in the community, especially on, you know, safe and collaborative school, things that, you know, other people might have thoughts on as well, so.
Absolutely.
And that was also based on your conversation with Dr. Knoll. He and I talked today on that as well. We agreed that that whole the target, um, targeted planning needs to address all of them.
The strategic.
Can can I get if are do y'all have an interest in the strategic planning process? Is that something that we are if we're interested in it, then I can do some research on some previous districts that have done it, and if they liked who they used or didn't, I could at least start to compile some options to bring to y'all?
Yes, please, for sure.
Okay, that's okay? All right, then we'll bring it in the future for formal approval on my formal approval tonight, but I just I didn't wanna go down that path without at least having some-
I I do want us to be included in that in-
Oh, you would be, absolutely.
In that strategic planning.
Oh, absolutely.
I don't want you all to just go down the path working on it and then you bring it back to us.
No, no, no.
Like, you have to, you really do have to do that in some ways on this one because we didn't have these goals set forth, so I'm not applying it to the baby.
No.
So typ- typically, on a a the a strategic plan would would mean hiring a consultant that would, you know, the the whole process would start with you all, and then they would set up community meetings. We we would probably, you know, ask you guys to, the same process can we do with the bond, right? Put it out there, who wants to be on the committee, get get a committee set, then they would do parent meeting, like, it's usually a big process, and then they bring it all back to you all and say, here it is, what do you wanna build?
So in regards to that, um, because we're trying to go, uh, from the board directed direction, um, that is one of the things that we've talked about. We've talked about a variety, uh, this whole strategic planning of hiring, the board hiring someone that comes in and oversees, and that includes something that you keep asking me about is the curriculum and instruction audit and, uh, you know, all these different things. But in that targeted, that person that we would bring in as a board that we would bring in, that that could be one of those whole things that could fall under all of that.
Yeah, you I think I believe it would, now, I've not been through the process, so I'm speaking a little bit just from having talked to other people, but, you know, the process kicks off with you all about what what is your priority, what do you want to see done, how do you want to see it move forward, and then they move forward. They're 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 not the driver, they're just the facilitator. It's the people's voices are the drivers, right? And then, um, you know, typically, what they come back with is, you know, the ideas and to to build goals or mission statements, visions, say, all the different pieces, um, that would come from that, that would go through you. So what what I'll do is I'll just reach out, I'll I'll look around, I'll reach out to some districts that that have good strategic plans, I'll ask them who they use, were they happy, and then I'll I'll see if I can get a list of maybe, you know, groups that have been effective and-
Dr. Knoll, what did you what did you say the last time we had a strategic plan was?
It's been, I Carrie'd have to answer that, because I was probably, if I even worked here yet, I was a teacher. Probably early, the late nineties, maybe?
Probably, yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm just curious, the efficacy of a strategic plan? Like, how many districts are using them? What results are they getting from having one?
We're 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 one of the very few that don't have one.
Okay.
Um, you know, I think it's like anything else, every every school district in Texas has a district improvement plan because you have to have one.
Right.
Some, it probably drives everything they do, some probably just gets put on a shelf and never gets seen. I think you do the exact same thing on a strategic plan. If it's really something that you value and you invest in it-
Right.
-it can be a big driver. I think for us, it can be a really big driver because we haven't done it in so long.
Right, right.
A lot of districts will do one, and then they'll update it four years later and then update it.
It would be to work in concert with a district improvement plan, though, correct?
Yeah, I think so, and then and that would-
How would it look different, I guess?
Yeah, the district improvement plan would would morph-
Right.
-probably based on that, because if if the goals changed based on the strategic plan, then the the goals would change in the district improvement plan-
Right.
-as well. So it becomes a driver for everything.
I mean, in in my line of work, a strategic plan comes along with funding and things like that. That doesn't inc- that doesn't change our ability to receive funding, it's just it's an overall-
I I think what it would, I think the biggest thing it would do for us is is give a common, a a common vision, right?
Sure.
Like, so we're we make sure, like, what we've tried to do with the district plan of getting everybody on the same page, it just lets everybody know, like, these are the priorities.
And it goes back to the previous point of identifying areas where we put our emphasis.
Correct, yes.
So that's actually where we're-
We're saying this is-
Where we're at, we need that.
Indeed, indeed.
I love it.
And I even see it from our end, the improvement plan, these are specific things we're working to improve, but there's just best practices that we do all the time. And what the way I vision it is, a strategic plan that you guys have led sets the, here's what we believe in and here's what's important to us, and the improvement plan still picks out, because you don't want this to be a hundred things to work on, right? The idea to improve, you wanna pick out the ones that are gonna-
Make the big difference.
Yes, but the strategic plan talks about everything that's important and what we believe in across, right, across the district, across the departments, and then it allows this document to maybe become what it's more intended to be, which is that just that strategic improvement. Because right now, it kind of houses, it's trying to do both and it's-
And that's because because of the times and where we've been, that's all we've been-
That's what we've been done.
It's been its role. So now is a a a, um, are we good to kind of, go ahead?
I just just really quickly, I I just wanted to, and I know you said you were gonna look into it a little bit, but if we're gonna invest into into getting something like this done, I mean, I love the the overall communication that it gives, but really, does it come down to, like, is it improving educational outcomes? And 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 that's really what I'd like to find out in the research before we sign off on something like that.
Yeah, well, and you know, it's gonna be hard.
PR move.
It's it's kinda like the other thing, it's it's hard, it might be hard to quantify, right? I mean, truthfully, I think it's gonna be more anecdotal of as we just talk to people like, hey, do you feel like it's helped you?
Right.
Um, I don't know that we'll be able to to quantify it.
Overall culture, culture maybe?
Yeah.
But I'm I'm wanna I wanna know, I mean, I know it's hard to quantify, but will this improve educational outcomes?
Yeah, I, yeah, that's what, well, that's a great question, and I don't know that we can know for sure. I think for us, I think it will, because we haven't done it in so long. Now, districts that do it like every three years, I'm sure they get to that point where it's like, hmm, here we go again, you know? We're gonna do this again. I I would doubt it would be less, in fact, for us, it's gonna be a whole new process that we're just gonna be like, wow, like, we've never really sat down and had that conversation or had that thought about that, you know?
Maybe like provide work-
I think this is a good time to do it.
...throughout the district.
Correct, yes.
District, yeah.
Has everyone had an opportunity to share, like, specific tonight, what they need to? I'd I'd like to ask, uh, we've done this on other things with the previous board. I'd like that if when you walk away from this, you go, you know, I really wanna focus on these things, if you could forward those to Dr. Knoll, since we can't communicate really much outside of this this time. If you could forward, I I, you know, whatever format really works best for you, I prefer, you know, I tend to use, um, you know, little paragraph type things, some people use just bullet points, I'd whatever works best for you to get those core priorities, maybe under those topics that were outlined, those goals that were outlined, uh, to Dr. Knoll for us to, then he can disseminate, they don't have everyone's names on it, but it's disseminated, and then we're able to work from that and bring forward again to the next meeting. Is that is that legal? Are we doing things legal that way?
Uh, I can certainly compile information and share it for you, so if you have information-
I'm just trying to make sure we're following Toma.
Yeah, yeah, if you go through me and you and you and I'm I'm a compiler of sharing information, you just can't, you all can't discuss it outside of here, but to compile information and share, just like we did with this today, is a very appropriate-
Right, and that and that's the way I took it and it and believed it to be, but I'm just asking for clarification, especially since outside of this, we are such good friends and we are struggling, we we like, okay, who have you talked to about this? Okay, we can't talk, you know, we're trying to be very, very legit. So, um, I I just wanna make sure we're doing that. So, uh, that's what I would ask directive-wise, walking away from this today, um, on the the, you know, the comprehensive goals that we're looking forward to setting, that'll be our walking papers that we can then take, share and disseminate again and organize so that it's, um, we get where everything is most high priority for everyone.
But if I'm understanding correctly, just, um, because if we're looking at bringing in a third party, someone to facilitate the process of us actually getting to a point where we have that truly-
So our, that's a, that's a strategic plan, but it will be driven for also, we have to have our goals as a board, what we are saying are our priorities, that we we take to Dr. Knoll, that's gonna take time, so for right now, this is just to say, we need these goals.
So this is more of a policy update, this is more of a comprehensive list of update the policy, but maybe that that is that is change once we do have a third-party review-
The strategic plan will be is a is a bit of a long play, right? I mean, you're you're probably looking at, by the time we start this process, it might be this time next year before that's done, right? I mean, because you're in the months of lead time, then a process to go through, then the the compiling, I don't-
That's where I was going.
Yeah, it'll be so, to to the point, if you wanna update goals or make an update to the policy to reflect these goals, I would do that more now.
Yeah.
You can always go back and revisit, the goals change based on the strategic planning, go back and amend it later.
That's where I was going.
Absolutely.
Okay, so was I clear as mud on that? I'm not sure I was clear what I was trying to say there. Then are we good to move on? Okay, it is nine-thirty, so, um, I'm going to, I want to address, um, the next item on the agenda, which is our last discussion, item D, for discussion regarding an FA local policy, um, regarding student welfare, parental authority, and gender fluidity matters. But, um, I I'm gonna say something about it, and then I'm gonna, if everyone wants to have discussion time on that, that's great, but if we want to do the same thing after I say what I'm gonna say and bring ideas to the table, we can discuss that when I'm done. But anyway, as this is the topic I brought forward in May, again, in June, I'd like to share my thoughts, concerns, and reasons for wanting this discussion. We have a legal policy in place, but what we don't have is a a policy that is written or any procedures that outlines specific gender-related topics. If we have nothing in place, we can't expect actions to be consistent or enforced district-wide, campus-wide, um, which potentially can put students in physical or mental well-being ri- at risk and puts a risk for lit- at risk for litigation. We do not have anything in place that relates to the following topics. One, how bathrooms, locker rooms, and similar facilities are to be used based on biological sex. Two, pronoun requests and usage requirements, the term there requirements, along with parental notification of such requ- requests if different from biological sex. The use of content in classroom and instruction material, um, that has to do with this topic. We don't specify when traveling, who is allowed to be housed together or not. Parent notifications if a student shows signs of gender confusion. Through my election process and time in the community and at the polls, and after serving the last two years and then volunteering this last election to work at the polls, one of the most dis- overwhelming questions or topics of discussion, aside from academic outcomes and discipline, was regarding this concerns, these concerns. Our goal should be to provide a safe learning environment and not engage with social transitioning of students. We're not equipped or trained to do so, and it puts our staff and teachers at risk for causing harm to a student by not knowing exactly how to address every issue and infringing on their First Amendment rights for them. We can't rush into deciding on what this would look like, but we can't be afraid and unwilling to put the mental health and safety of our students first by putting policy in place. We must seek counsel and we must take time with this, but we can't ignore it. By saying no to this topic is to say all of our students' mental health just doesn't matter and the community's concerns don't matter. Prioritary meeting, I provided Dr. Knoll with policy information on this topic from a variety of other school districts that have already written such local policy and some who have already litigated such policy for the trustee, um, for he and the trustees, and this was shared publicly in the board packet for tonight. With that, I'll ask, does anyone wanna open in discussion? Do we want to share, um, now that you've or you've been given this information? Do you want to do, again, like I just said about our comprehensive goals, do you wanna have discussion now? Do you wanna share with Dr. Knoll that's your thoughts that can then be sent to the trustees for compiling and reading each other's and choosing areas of importance? How do you wanna proceed on this topic tonight?
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Why do we not have a local policy on it?
Okay, do you, who are you asking it to?
The board never approved one.
Yeah.
I did bring, tried to bring this exact same topic of discussion just for discussion. Wasn't something I was wanting to rush into or there was a boogeyman or anything like that. I just feel that if, I tried to bring it up in May, I tried to bring it up in June, it was shot down both times. I didn't even move forward with a policy because I wanted to have buy-in, I wanted to have discussion, I wanted to seriously consider the effects of putting something in place and so on and so forth, but there was no, there was no perceived to be no desire for that at that time, so that's why I'm bringing it up now.
I would just like to say that as as somebody that just ran a campaign, um, for months, I can say that the public was very concerned. I mean, I heard it numerous times, so it would be inauthentic for me not to want to address this, um, as a representative for the people that voted for me.
Before we go on to the next thing, do you want to have discussion tonight? Do you wanna try to compile information and share it, or just how how would you like to proceed tonight?
I mean, it's the elephant in the ring, we might as well do it.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say that I think it's important that we are proactive and not reactive, and so it, I I know that in the past, you brought something for, did you have a policy in the past?
No, I tried to bring discussion, I didn't ask for, I said potentially take action.
Okay.
But I I wanted us to discuss it and there wasn't, didn't have an appetite or a desire to proceed, so I never-
Yeah, I can't remember. Couldn't remember if you presented one or not.
I did not, because to me, that is one of the reasons, I think it's something that we build together. In other words, um, policies should be that way anyway, and in and even when we've done other policies, um, that your your, the book policy that originally came forward of November of twenty-three, you presented a a draft with Carrie, Ms. Galatas's assistance, and then it was disseminated to all of us and we were able to-
We all got input.
We all had input, but I don't, I didn't want to proceed with a full policy because this encompasses a variety of things without having everyone have a chance to weigh in just on what that might look like. Plus, then we need to seek counsel on it as a board, what is right? We we already know we had a student or a share or a speaker in public comment tonight share about suicide rates and everything, and yes, that's critical, but we 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 aren't responsible for that. We can only try to make things better and, um, and this is, we don't want to have, what what happens when there's an incident where someone is put in a situation, and you brought this up actually in May or June, where something does happen, whether it's a trans student being, um, bullied or whatever, or someone else, a a female in a bathroom, a male comes in and there's no policy in place, how, there's no procedure in place that is district-wide. It's incident by incident, and that opens us up also to litigation.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I noticed in the board packet, there were several policies of other districts that have done it, so I would love to, you know, hear research or maybe Ms. Galatas has input to share of what policies are working out better for specific districts versus other districts, maybe it's opening up to litigation and all that, so I'd love your input on that.
Well, I mean, what we know right now, and I don't know what, well, I suppose we can suspect what will happen, you know, the Katie policy was being investigated by OCR and that I imagine will change shortly.
Actually, their, their situation with the striking down of the Biden's Title IX actually takes that away, so it's.
Right.
So it's not even really, I mean, theirs is really a non-issue and if I'm not mistaken, I'm not even sure it was brought forward by students or parents or residents of their district.
All right, so no, certainly what I could do is, I've seen the examples that you provided, I could just put something together, at least a starting point.
It'd be great, yeah.
And then maybe that'd be easier for you guys to look at and talk about.
That way we can all just kind of, like we've done in the past, just keep adding our input and subtracting and kind of coming to collectively.
Yes, I notice in them, there's like confusion of terms, you know, they don't use the same term, you know, they're not, they're not written, we can, we can do better and so.
Well, when you're taking one district's FA and one district's other area, I mean, they're not going to be in alignment of their.
Even within the policies, you know, they define terms and then never use the defined terms, you know, so.
But what I want to be very careful with is, this is a starting point, but I want to be very careful that we don't make inferences on Title IX because right now, our Title IX, I think we still have room for improvement in our local Title IX verbiage that's in our local policy for how we are addressing Title IX issues, so.
Is that where the update from TASB is coming or that's in legal, correct?
Well, the legal policy is just a summary of what, our legal policy currently for FFI, FFH is.
Yeah, FFH.
Yeah, FH is based on the Trump administration's regulations related to Title IX, so I don't anticipate a lot of changes to it, to legal, to, either, either one. They haven't changed since those regulations were implemented.
So an update will be coming out in January for FFH, only legal, correct?
Yes, to remove some of the notes that were added when the new regulations came out and then there was the litigation involving them, just to let people know, so yeah, all that will be removed.
But not local.
Yeah, only notes will be removed, I don't think there'll be substantive changes. And there may be to improve that because I do agree that it's a little confusing and so maybe they'll be streamlining it or making it more clear and then we certainly always can look at our local and adjust as well.
So perhaps we can wait on January's update to do anything to, which we talked about in the last meeting.
Yes, and I'm not, I'm not opposed to waiting on that as far as for finalization of stuff. I just want, because I know how much time this takes and 71 things to look at for the next meeting, I just want us to start getting this discussion going, we have these comprehensive goals that we're trying to set, so the more we can have things that were, once we get past the holidays, it'll also make a big difference. We, as a board, have to have our agenda set by the 20th before, because we, for the next workshop, and we have someone that has a major family wedding, so we don't want to put the burden of getting that agenda on, you know, on her, on that, right?
That'll be the board meeting agenda.
The board meeting agenda.
That we, that we have nuptials, yes.
Yes, so, so we won't, right, so we won't be putting, as far as I'm thinking, we won't be putting FA or the comprehensive goals on the agenda for the December meeting, this is going to be a work in progress thing. Are we in agreement? Okay, so.
But we could, we could bring it back, you know, the January workshop and, and with the examples and then have discussion at that workshop.
That very well could be.
That we'll have to post by the 20th.
But that won't, we won't know that.
Right.
We really won't know that by the 20th. We won't have, that's not.
I can get you a draft by, you know, before then, so you have like a month or two months to look at it, think about it.
I know, but he's saying if we put it on the agenda for the, for the January workshop, we have to have it ready to go by December 20th because of the holidays.
I love your confidence though.
Well, we could, we could bring a, it doesn't mean that it would be nearly final or near.
Oh, no, it won't be anywhere near.
No, no, but we could.
Because we're going to need to still get an attorney outside of the district to look at it.
No, we could, but we could have something that you could just use as a discussion point, because as we saw with what was included today, there's also a lot of different ways people have done these things. Some put it under facilities, some put it under this, some put it under that. One of the conversations that Trustee Odenmacher and I had was, you know, I think for clarity's sake, if we want a comprehensive policy, I think it would be easier on everybody if it was a single comprehensive policy rather than touch here, touch here, touch here, touch here, because then, then it creates confusion, we don't know where to go and all the things. So, you know, perhaps we, we can start with some of the more comprehensive policies that exist and then that can be the framework of, at least what you could, if that's what you want to have on your agenda to discuss in January, we could probably have a draft ready for a board book on the 20th of just, here's a draft, it's, be very.
And, and that's a great place to start with us as a work in progress. And here's the other thing, we can always put it on the agenda for, on December 20th or for January 7th, but if we choose to pull it at that point, we can. The point that I, I want to make sure is, I don't want Ms. Linda over there, Ms. Godfrey, and I also want it to be challenged by this time constraint, but also want us to not be in the same situation we were over the Thanksgiving holidays of under the gun, trying to be prepared for everything when we're, and the district coming back on January 7th, so the administration's team. So I'd like us to have a preliminary, we can put it on the agenda for the January workshop, but let's just keep it fluid on that, no puns intended, on that issue.
Yeah, and just while you made that point.
Can I make a, I haven't had a chance to speak on this yet. I just agree with Trustee Nelson that we need to be proactive in this issue. I agree it needs to be a comprehensive policy. I liked Katie ISD, shocker, it's like we've never talked about their policy before, but I do think that's a good starting point. And I'll state too that we are being a bit reactive because there are things that are happening in our district right now. We do know that there's been biological boys and girls bathrooms. So these are issues that we need to address, it's not just fear mongering, it's not just getting ahead, these things are happening right now, so we need to address these and I'd like for someone, for clarity on that topic, because I know we've had people saying that these things are not happening in the district.
I will tell you that I have been told this as fact and Dr. Knoll and I had a conversation, he explained how this has happened within the district, where students that have come in, regardless of what their birth certificate states, they have come in and been registered as a girl, let's say it's a male registered as a girl, that's all they've been known as and from kindergarten on, that's all they've been known as. I don't for a fact know what levels these students are in bathrooms, but I know that for a fact it is happening. I don't know what campuses, I don't know what grade levels, I don't know the number of students, I just know that it is fact, from, from what I was told by Dr. Knoll.
Also, just to be clear, we've never had a single incident, I don't want to paint a picture of, there's never been a negative incident regarding a student like that and also to be clear, I can't tell you a number because I don't have an educational need to know a lot of those things as well. We've always dealt with them on, on an individual basis, campuses work with families and they've been able to work those out. I understand your desire to have a policy, that, that's fine, no, no concerns there, but I do want to make it clear, we've never had an incident, I don't, and I don't want to.
And I don't want to imply, and I do not mean to imply that there's been any negative per se incident that has occurred, but I do know there have been female students in bathrooms that males have come in, this has been told to me by, by the parent, that the student was traumatized, not that this, not that the male going in the female bathroom did anything to her, it was that on the flip side, while we need to be mindful of all students and these children going into the bathrooms and these students going into the bathrooms, we need to be mindful of those that are in the bathrooms that are experiencing it as well. So that being said, and I also don't want to be outing or putting students that with gender fluidity issues or trans students at risk, I just want them to have safe space. I, I just want that girls are in the girls bathroom, boys are in the boys bathroom and there's no question there. And then everyone should be theoretically in a safe space at that point, so.
Yeah, I agree. I, I don't think, I don't think we're going to see major changes after you pass your policy, which is fine.
And wouldn't that be beautiful?
Right.
But at least then district wide, everyone knows what to expect. District wide, there's, we, we, people have directive and then no one's worried about how to handle it and we don't go one by one.
So I just want to make the point because you made it a while ago, Linda will be out on Fri, next Friday, so it's next Friday, so it's the December board meeting is when she'll be out for Thursday and Friday preparing for her daughter's wedding, so we, the board book, this is a reminder for all our friends out here too, this, the board book, any items that you may want to have for the December board meeting, if we could get those soon would be awesome, so she can get that taken care of before she leaves.
Is there, I'm sorry, do we have any other discussion?
With that policy, I don't have a whole lot of discussion yet because I'm waiting to see what we put together. I do have a concern, I think, I've seen a lot about parental notification and I think that's extremely important, just as a parent myself, I can only, I can only work with the information that's given to me, so it's really helpful to have that other piece of the puzzle when something's going on with my child. However, I also am concerned that we're going to place a burden on teachers when we require this notification and so as we put this together, I'd like to make sure that we're not giving teachers a whole new pile of paperwork and like expectations that they're going to have to deal with, so that's just one of my concerns with that.
I've seen some articles out there talking about maybe having a counselor, designated counselor who is trained to talk about these things, maybe being the point of contact, so I don't think that's a bad idea. Also, having a reporting mechanism too, so we can keep track of these things.
And one of my concerns is that we've already seen it on a, well, we saw it on a school campus, although there are those that said it didn't happen, I've talked with a teacher that tried to report it and, and I will, I just want to make sure that we have recording capabilities of how we're tracking it and that the policy set forth is what gets carried out. Okay, and since there is no executive session tonight, I don't need to read that and I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, the time is 9:55 and I'll call this meeting to close.